Okay.
Maria, Maria, just give me one minute. Don't do it, I'm sorry.
Maria, what am I missing? Hold on. Now, why? Probably lost it. Oh, it's about the bike thing. Okay, very good. All right, very good. Call the June eighth, 2020 meeting for the Maple City Council, lower. We don't have the... You might want to give the invitation tonight. If not, we'll do a moment of silence. He would... I guess with me with particular concern and thought regarding all that can process today. First and foremost, our first responders and those folks putting their lives on the line every day for us. Thank you very much. I can stop yelling now. All right. For those of you that are willing and able, if you would, please stand with me if you believe.
My allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everybody. Okay. We've... Let's jump right in. You know, uh... Y'all will hear me talking now. Dan, you want to bring to us the first agenda item?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This request...
Get that turned off here. I'm asking you.
All right, I got it. So, this request is for a six-month continuance. The applicant is here to answer any questions and give you a real brief understanding of what the continuance request is all about. With that being said, I'll turn it over to the applicant's representative to answer any questions.
Yes, sir. How do you find right there?
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, my name is Mickey Grinstaff. I'm with the law firm of Shuts &amp; Bowden, 300 South Orange Avenue, Street 6800. Here tonight on behalf of MC and PPL, MC and the developer owner of lots one and two of Pedalaga. You guys may remember, some of the new commissioners might not, have been in this for a long time. I know Commissioner Guthrie has been with us, he's been with us all along the way. Foundry Commercial had filed a PD application with the developer's consent, the owner's consent, to develop lots one and two for commercial purposes. To amend a PD that had been previously approved sometime ago, several years ago, maybe a couple of years ago, for the polling group. Some of you may remember that plan. That plan is in place today. Foundry had applied to amend the PD as it pertains to lots one and two. And substantial progress was made on that application to amend the PD to lots one and two. In fact, I think at one point, like last year, we were very, very close to a final approval and we needed to continue to work with staff on a couple of internal tweaks that we were working on. And for one reason or the other, things began to slip a little bit. And then I don't have to tell you what happened in March, April, May. Covid and crisis hit. Two of these substantial tenants were told by brokers, I have not personally spoken with tenants, prospective tenants, but we were told by the broker represented that both Sprouts and LA Fitness had suspended their expansion plans. They may have even terminated their expansion plans, but they have suspended them. And that troubled Foundry to a point where Foundry has terminated their contract with the owner of the property. We continue to have dialogue with Foundry. As y'all know, they're great folks and they've got a true reputation. We continue to speak with them, but they are not under contract and Dan is aware of that. So, here we are, what to do. It was the contract, the hearing was extended until tonight. And we're here to ask for yet another extension. The discussion we had was that was how long the extension should be received. And the short answer is, we don't really know, for all reasons that no one knows. So, we looked at the last meeting of the year, which is December 14th. And we are respectfully requesting that you guys allow, that the commission allows us, allow us to extend that application, keep it in the hopper. I think many of you know that a lot of progress was made on that plan compared to the previous plan, which is what has been approved and in existence today. So, there's no harm in the extension. And we would respectfully request that you approve the date certain extension. And unfortunately, if we're unable to do that, then we would have to withdraw the application, consider revert back to the approved polling plan, which we would like not to have to do. Now, if you approve the extension and we come in, we know that we're still going to have to address a number of issues with staff, with DRG and the DRC. So, this is not like we're going to come in with brand new boat and it's going to be over. We've got to get back in a large part of the process. We just don't have to start the whole process all over again. So, with that, Mayor, I'd like to answer any questions or sit down and shut up.
All right, very good, Mickey. Anybody else have any questions, Mr. Grinstaff? Oh, I've got a couple of questions. How do you do that? Mickey, the application had been transferred from Foundry to the property owner.
Correct.
And that, so, again, I'm for Florida, so go slow. That, so what we're working on here is a resumption that sometime between now, possibly the end of the year, December 14th, I think it's done. Is that the property owner will continue to market the property to whatever potential developer applicants there may be out there. Presuming the opportunity to find something similar enough in concept that it might be, you know, some... There are a lot of universal stuff from all of this council, right?
That's correct.
Right. So, that, does that, I'm presuming if some other prospective purchaser came along and wanted to do an entirely different concept? That may or may not find itself, because you never know. In keeping with the concept that Foundry had in style and substance? That would the property owner theoretically be open to, I mean, some sort of village concept, similar to what?
I'm sure, we would, I'm very confident to tell you that if someone comes in that has a plan that doesn't work with what we've all seen.
Right.
And they need to amend it, and they can amend it to make something really nice happen there, that we would be very open minded, I promise you.
Well, that would be my concern, that from the city's perspective, that the opportunities to find that 14-plus acres still actively being pursued, however creatively that may be, you know, to the market. I personally wasn't real knocked out about taking a six-month hiatus from, you know, that waiting for something else to happen, whether it's Foundry, or Justin, or somebody else, you know, that may or may not be functional. Again, I just didn't want to buy time.
Mr. Mayor, I notice it's kind of ironic what you're talking about. You didn't want to have that hiatus, that the mask rolled off of your face.
Yeah.
None of us wanted that, I promise you.
Right.
And, look, here's the thing. If someone comes in with a better plan or a different plan, we know we're going to have to start over.
Right.
From day one, scratch. If it's, we think this newer, the plan that Foundry was working on is a nice plan. We think that was better received at the city than the polling plan after having seen it, after having tweaked it and improved it and worked on it for a couple of years. And we would hate to, you know, just throw that out.
Right.
We can throw it out tonight, we may come back with it and start over six months from now, right? But, you know, there may be a new use, there may be a new plan, and we may have to start over. We're hoping, we think there's a good plan. There is a chance that someone may like the plan.
Yeah.
We think, we think the city likes the plan. We were tweaking some very small details in the final days that was pushing it out a little bit. But it wasn't like the big concept. We, you guys, y'all like the out parcels, you like the out parcels hiding the parking, you like the real engine of the site, on the polling site. So, we didn't want to throw that out. Now, may come back in six months and say, hey, there's a, there's a new plan. Who knows, it might be a new use there. We don't know what's going to happen with retail.
I guess, uh, being on December 14th, we're going to be having the same discussion?
I don't know. I hope not.
Oh, come on, Mickey, I'm like, you know.
I hope not, and I hope that nobody's wearing a mask.
Yeah. Yeah, well, yeah, weren't you there? All right. And my greatest concern is, much as we had an old Goodie's Wind Dixie building sitting there for 10 years as a symbol of manifest maitland failure. That we have this killer piece of dirt sitting out there on Laven Boulevard as another symbol of manifest maitland failure. So, again, the dynamic and the diligence, it's a part of that. Easy to say real quick, but you can't make people come by and develop.
No, sir, I don't think that's fair for anyone to say is a manifest, manifest failure of maitland. Anybody that knows anything, if they're not aware of the Covid crisis, then we probably ought not be worried about what they think anyway, right? But they would have it all wrong if they tried to blame it on the city.
I understand. All right, did you have any questions? Thank you, Mickey.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Anybody from the public like to address this specific agenda item? Now would be the time. All right, seeing none. Let's bring it back to council, any further questions or discussion?
Well, I guess mine was, I remember sitting down in the audience when, you know, they were last here. And I think, you know, councilman Wild has some issues and councilman Lowndes had some issues, and Mayor, you did yourself with it. So, I think I'd be interested in seeing where, what, where we're at right now with this project, through Dan.
I don't know that, I don't know that it matters in the sense that we had problems with how you're going to structure parking on a gym, the gym or... And I think their issue is that now they don't know what this is going to look like. So, I think they're just asking for time. And the part of the plan that was kind of floating, I remember, was flexibility in kind of the way that this thing was going to get built out. We had sort of built, put building envelopes. I remember where we were, you would put together, you moved the out parcels up on some of them. And we had done some things to disguise some of that parking and done some things that would give flexibility as to where to put the skirt. And I think that was all a good thing, standpoint of the improvements. And I think we worked on also the parking plan, putting some trees, having some more breaking out of that overall parking field. So, there wasn't just a sea of parking with the trees that were worn in for a lot of the show.
That was another issue, I think, with the green space, how much?
But I think to, I think to hold into this thing now is probably not time that's spent. I mean, I think that we're looking at a lot of uncertainty right now. And so, this is, I'm not sure the advantage or disadvantage of filing new versus just continuing this on. But for the sake of understanding that this is an uncertain world, I don't see a harm in kicking this out six months. And we can all hope that the things look better and calmer, and we can all look at this with a clear head. Hopefully, there's retail activity and everybody wants to be a maitland, so, you know.
I remember we were all excited for this.
I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of giving the sense and understanding that whether or not, how much of this had to do with Covid versus, I don't even care at this point. It's an understandable delay, and I think we wish him the best and hope that they come back with a great project in six months.
I agree with that, Mike. I would, I would move to continue public hearing to amend the main school conference more plan development with associated concept plans and public hearing in action date for December 14th, 2020.
It's the most official motion we've ever taken.
I'm waiting to see what he's hiding.
The prince picking up.
I'll second, I'll second that. We got it. All right.
I'm Mayor John Lowndes.
Um, all right, we have motion, any further discussion? Hearing that, Ms. Maria? Come over here. Yeah, she shouldn't be by your call. Oh, hi.
Councilman Paul Harrison?
Hi.
Councilman Thomas?
Hi.
Councilman Wild?
Hi.
Mayor McDonald?
Dan. All right. Let's move on. Ms. Maria, you want to take the tackle on leading this side?
In accordance with the city of Maymouth, Florida, remembering the official zoning map, a part of chapter 21 of the Mayland Code of Ordinance, by changing the zoning classification of property generally located on the southwest corner of East Horatio Avenue, this avenue, further described herein, from a planned development to a planned development, permitting the expansion of the existing structure, providing for a mix of retail, restaurants, fitness, and office uses, prohibiting the drive-through and facilities, and providing for a backup there.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Dan?
All right, council, I'm just going to kind of give a real brief overview, because we went pretty much very detailed, like the introduction to the bank. As you remember, it's just under acre parcel at Swoop and Horatio and Doyle. The plan is to add up to 2,870 square feet to the existing 5,000 square foot building with parking and loading areas. The, here's what, the elevation of what the building is supposed to look like, we're going to redo the outside of the building and be more streetscape along the frontage, more wide sidewalks, eliminates the unsafe, the unsafe drive aisles that are with the drive-through. As you recall, there's five conditions of approval that came in the original application and the original ordinance that was being introduced. On May 11th, council did vote unanimously to introduce the proposed ordinance, subject to those five conditions. And during that introduction, the applicant did request two additional conditions regarding the size of the building and the threshold for the amendments. Those conditions that were introduced by the applicant were that they would have the option of building, using the 5,075 square foot building up to the 7,945 square feet. And that if there was any difference in 5% reduction, they'd have to go through the site planning process. These conditions were supported by staff and were what they have in front of you tonight. Also discussed at the introduction meeting was, there's some discussion on council about some of the allocation of uses and type of uses. So, staff has worked with the applicants and they're offering two additional conditions. One of them being when food and beverage service uses occupy a majority of the square footage of the building, then they'll have to have at least two uses. If food and beverage does not occupy the majority of the building, they'll have to have at least three uses within this mix. And that no more than 50% of any of it could be a single use for any single office or retail use. Also, a condition about retail use shall be permitted, it offers sale in combination of variety of convenience shopping goods and consumer shopping goods, where majority of the items in the inventory are continuously offered at a sale price less than $5. This prohibits the sale of a, of some kind of store that has primarily all their items under $5. So, it does not apply to specialty food or beverages. So, if you have like a candy shop or a bakery or something like that, it does not apply to that. So, with that being said, staff recommends council adopt the proposed ordinance amending the 360 East Horatio Plan Development and associated development plans, subject to the conditions outlined in the ordinance with the addition of that as condition eight, nine, I just read. The applicant is also here with a brief presentation. And with that, would be happy to answer any questions. I can answer now, or you can wait till after the applicant's and could have spoke.
Very good. Anybody have any questions, Dan?
Good evening, Tara Tegram, Lowndes Walker, 215 North People Drive, Orlando, Florida. So, I shortened my presentation, but I can't guarantee y'all's to be any slower. So, get through it a little less time than last time. As you know, these are the current site conditions of what the old vacant bank property currently is. As you can see, this is one of the images from Swoop. It is a one-acre property currently that old bank that was approved under a 1992 PD. So, we're proposing up to 2,870 additional gross square feet. We believe and based on the staff report, your staff has also confirmed that the functionality and the aesthetic of the site is going to be upgraded. We're having access upgrades. We're also going to be reconfiguring the access to the site to get rid of some old access points that would otherwise not be permitted by DOG or any cities today. Extensive interior improvements as well as facade improvements, removal of a drive-through, landscaping improvements, reductions of trips, and a new use of pedestrian mobility enhancements. We have a Main Street future land use designation with a PD zoning, and we have a requested mix of uses. Back in the fall, Panzi moved to approve the PD, and then this year, DRC also recommended approval unanimously of the PD with staff conditions. When it comes to sidewalk upgrades, something that's important for the city, especially for your downtown zoning district, is to be able to have functionality and safety for pedestrians and bicyclists. So, we'll be upgrading the sidewalk to eight feet wide from its current four-foot wide, approximate four-foot wide, uh, current sidewalks, enhancing the pedestrian and bicyclist mobility opportunities at busy intersection here in the city. Horatio sidewalk is also currently about five feet wide. We'll be upgrading that sidewalk to eight feet, enhancing that mobility as well of the intersection, and providing pedestrians with a direct connection to our outdoor seating and activity center, which you could see in some of the elevations that Dan showed you. On the staff review of the project, they noted that our proposed mix of uses are consistent with your DMZD and are compatible with the surrounding area. Proposed off-street parking is adequate for the use provided 16 spaces above what code would otherwise require. Our proposed development improves access and circulation for vehicles, pedestrians, and bicyclists. And when it comes to the development details, as you noted in the staff report, there are some waivers which we talked about in great detail at the first city council hearing. And under your code, it specifically acknowledges that the individual unique characteristics or circumstances of a given development can warrant flexibility in some of those design standards. And I think this is one of those great examples of where your code doesn't encourage redevelopment and adaptive reuse with some of the inflexible standards that it has. And so, fortunately, there is a mechanism for developers to be able to request waivers so long as they meet those code criteria. Some of those code criteria include the fact that there is an existing building on the property that may inhibit your ability to meet the specific requirements under your code. So, when your staff analyzed the waivers that we requested, they gave a recommendation for support for all of those waivers. And that's because the site and building configurations don't support a strict application of the code. Really, the waivers that we are requesting are for a functional aesthetic upgrade of meeting the overall intent and the spirit behind the DMZD portions of your code, even though we can't make some of those strict applications. When it comes to the conceptual images, you saw these in the last presentation, nothing has changed. This is what our hopeful project is going to look like. This is what our hopeful project is going to look like, still bringing forth that mixed use Mayland Market project that has great connectivity to the pedestrian areas outside and provides for some great urban form and an overall desirable place for the community to congregate. You can see another image here that shows some of the renderings of what this could look like, and then one more image showing some of the outdoor seating areas. An example of one of the recent local redevelopments, which I think captures kind of exactly what we're looking to do here is in Winter Park, that's the state auto body repair. And you can see the before and after pictures are pretty stunning what has happened just from a simple adaptive reuse of a building. So it has brought that corner of Winter Park alive. And you can see people out there all weekend enjoying those open spaces that are really meant for the community to go into any of those mix of retail and restaurant uses, bring out the goods outside to be able to sit and congregate. And that shows another image in the evenings and during the day, and the interiors of some of the buildings that they have. So our request and the basis for the approval of our request is that we're consistent with your code, compatible with the surrounding area, our site plan is consistent with your comp plan, and the proposed development can create an environment of substantial desirability and stability. These are all the conditions of approval enumerated in your staff report. I won't go over them. I agree with the two new conditions that your staff brought up at tonight's hearing. We're happy to have those as additional voluntary conditions of approval. One more that we wanted to add was that there will be no sale of live pets, given that we are going to have a mix of uses. We, we talked to staff and figured that probably wouldn't be the best from a health code standpoint, and we sell them live animals inside where we're also having food vendors. So we, we just go ahead and take that one out, so there will be no sale of live pets, pet shop permitted on the property as well. So our request tonight is to approve our ordinance to amend the PD and consistent with staff's recommendation of approval, also including the new voluntary condition of approval that I showed, as well as the staff's two other additional conditions of approval. Happy to answer any questions that you may have, and if there are any comments from the public, I'd ask for the opportunity to come back up. I don't know if it has been forwarded to you, but this may be the first time in history there was unsolicited letters of support coming in for a project that I've had. So I would like to enter those into the record. We got about a dozen folks around town and two front neighbors, adjacent property owners who gave their support as well for the project. But there seem to be a lot of folks in the community who were excited for us to bring something new to that area and to really be able to connect to the great projects that we have just right around here in City Hall as well. So thank you again for your time and happy answering questions.
Thanks, Tara. Anybody have any questions for Tara right now?
I just got one. Tara, um, yeah, this is, uh, we're gonna use this as a shopping center, um, so it's gonna be a mix. Do we have any, do you all have any retail coming in right now?
In, in terms of having something under a letter of intent?
Yeah.
No, not right now. We were waiting to be able to get the approval. Most folks want to see that the project's gonna actually be able to come out of the ground before they're gonna connect to anything.
But that's, that's the plan to bring somebody.
Absolutely, yeah. And that's why we have that specific requirement now for a mix of uses and some square footage requirement, so that we do really have a mixed use project.
Okay, thanks.
Man, I could ask a quick question also, it's not such a quick question. Underground, I presume, I know that there's apparently been a request made and design done, Duke, outlining what that would actually entail, what the pros and cons of that might be. Can you fill up the blanks for me a little bit there?
Sure. I'm gonna skip through. I actually had a short form and a long form, just in case anybody has some additional questions.
You wrote that?
There we go. All right, so let me pull this up.
Yeah, there's so much more of that block that's already underground.
Yeah, yeah. So we met with Duke dating back to, gosh, November of last year, had multiple onsite meetings with one of the specific representatives, his name's Jeremiah Wong, and we met with ours, we met with your staff, we met with our project team, trying to figure out how we could possibly design this project in a way that it wouldn't make the entire project not feasible anymore for us to develop. And there's a couple reasons why it has to be designed the way it is. One, because people much smarter than we at Duke Energy said so, and we've thought over that at length, that the only way that we can make the specific undergrounding on this site work, because our site feeds a lot of other properties around us, so it's kind of a significant hub of some of Duke's poles and transformer ocsens for the utilities. And so it would remove five existing poles from the site, it would actually have to move some of those poles directly across the street. So the neighboring adjacent plaza that has the comic book store, if we don't, if we have to underground, we're just moving poles onto their property, is what Duke told us, because they can't just take them away and not have them feeding into another pole somewhere else unless everybody else begins to underground. We then have to have three switch gears put above ground, four six pool boxes underground, and one transformer above ground. Here's an email, and I believe this all was forwarded to everybody as well previously, where after one of our most previous onsite meetings with staff and Duke Energy, we asked them, can we move any of these poles away from the front of our property and the side of our property, because it was impeding access and making for unsafe vehicular movements? And it was also creating some unsafe pedestrian connection points, on conflict points on our sidewalk as well. So that was going to have caused some issues for that pedestrian connectivity in the safest manner possible. And Duke told us no, that we couldn't move it back toward Doyle, we couldn't put it at the rear of our property, at where they showed us that those undergrounding, that undergrounding needed to occur was as contemplated plans that we had submitted previously. So those were the emails where we had had that conversation, and Duke specifically told us no. So if we did underground, we would lose fourteen percent of our parking spaces. The loading zone nearest to the building's receiving entrance would need to be moved another eighty feet from the surface area, which really doesn't make good sense and doesn't allow for good circulation around the site, especially for that loading truck, and it certainly is the least efficient place that we could put that loading zone if we had to do that. Twenty-nine proposed exfiltration chambers would need to be located somewhere else on our site. Our engineers couldn't figure out where we would.
You say twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine. So our engineers couldn't figure out where would those go. Certainly that's also far above my pay grade. And then the above-ground gear would have to be located right at the edge of the pavement due to the size of the equipment and the rear clearance that's required, and that's where I brought up that it would be at the risk of vehicular damage. It couldn't be screened because nothing would be planted in front of those access panels. And so that would be really visible from Swoop and highly visible from the site. And then the pool boxes in the new sidewalk would break up the city's required stamping pattern, create a variation in texture, a potential tripping hazard, certainly not something we would want for pedestrians or bicyclists in that area. So one of the specific provisions under your code is section five dash twenty, and that provides that the city can consider existing buildings on a property when looking at undergrounding requirements. And I think this is a perfect example of an existing building adaptive reuse that really prohibits us from having a good compliance with your code in a manner that doesn't disrupt the entirety of our site plan, cause a whole host of other problems, certainly just pushes the problem of undergrounding directly to the neighbors across the street. And we showed some images last time of where that would move from where it circled in red, some of those poles having to get moved across to where it circled in orange. And that, and it's unclear in conversations that we've had about this, whether that pole would have to mean the existing pole sign gets moved off that property? Is there enough right-of-way to put the pole over on five hundred east Horatio? So it really is just kind of causing a host of issues on the site. So that's, given what your code allows in terms of consideration for a variance from undergrounding, I mean, I think we clearly meet the intent. We're not asking for this just because it's, it's a huge financial hardship, and it truly is. That alone will kill the project. But we understand that that's not the basis, that you can grant a variance, which is why we spent so much time working with your staff and working with Duke Energy on every other feasible alternative that we could come up with, that made sense with the site plan, that allowed us to meet the rest of your code while still bringing forth the project that was going to also meet the intent of the DMZD and your comp plans.
Another question, y'all, the parking site plan also included opening up ingress and egress at Doyle. I have some concerns about, again, the level of vehicular goodness. That all works out very well for our first responder line, and given the quicker ingress and egress to additional cars right there, both the, uh, proposed sub-property and others. But, you know, again, we've also got, you know, the great deal of vehicular traffic that comes in and out of itself through and does all sorts of things. I treated myself to a large cup of McDonald's coffee, sat over there on the curb for about an hour and fifteen minutes watching how, uh, traffic in the morning negotiates through there. And it might scare you a little. But, so those are, that's a concern for me, that we have, on an already busy former driveway, there's now a public street, and it's not exactly conducive to pedestrian or bicyclists today, or even in this proposed plan, we put even more vehicles on it. Because I don't think we would have a, you're proposing right out, right in, right out onto a ratio. Even Swoop coming out on the, on the north end is a right in, right out. What are we actually picking up for, you know, the proposed project with that ingress and egress? Is it just become a third ingress and egress spot?
And so the, the image here on the screen shows you, and it's outlined in pink, and I think that's the, what everyone continues to talk about with Doyle, right? That the portion outlined in pink that kind of comes down like an L on the bottom, that is private property, and that does have connectivity out to more public right-of-way. And so leaving our property, if you took a left out, you can see that there is a good amount of space between where our blue property outline is and where that private easement access actually begins. Between that area, you could go and take a left into McDonald's if you wanted. You could also take a right out to get back toward Horatio, and that's a public right-of-way. And so when we first met with your staff, and, and again, we've, we've been working on this project for two years, and their professional opinion since day one, they were always fully supportive of us having access onto public right-of-way. And our neighbors directly next to me, the office building, that's where they have their trash pickup back there. And your, your, the, the city waste management is coming to, to pick up dumpsters in and out of there. There's certainly enough maneuverability, like attorney radius for, for safe access for city vehicles to be servicing those properties. I understand that there might be some, some folks who, maybe they don't know, I mean, I think at one time we even offered to put up a sign on that property that says private drive. I would assume if the property owner thought it was a big enough deal, they may have done that themselves or wanted to, to put up some more directional signage that way, but, but certainly it is public right-of-way, and I'm, I'm sure staff can, can give an opinion on that as well, and how public works analyze giving permission for us and approving for us to have that access onto Doyle.
And I'm with you, and I, and you and I, we all understand, or have seen, where there are commercial vehicles parked that are running McDonald's to get bite deep, again, again, happens every day. Maybe not so much with spring, but, you know. So some of that's a little troubling to me, that we are at least setting up a possibility that there gets to be more vehicular traffic that otherwise there may not be. And so a concern for me. All right, any other thoughts or questions?
We got, just one more, Tara, if you don't mind. So what time would you say is your, we expect this to be busy? What, what hours in the day are you looking at? Are you looking like every eight in, or every, yeah?
Ideally.
You want to be.
It, it, that's hard to say. It's really gonna depend on the ultimate anchor tenant we would get, kind of the, the mix of uses that we bring in there. Certainly if it is, if it's coffee, that's gonna attract some crowds, maybe earlier in the morning. If it had, you know, a, a small yoga studio in there, a Pilates studio, you're only gonna get folks intermittently during those, during those classes. So it is, it is not as if it's going to be an all-day constant number of people. I think it's.
Right, that's, that's what hours you think are like the peak hours.
It, it would be hard to, to try to guess.
Like you were saying, with a coffee shop, it would definitely, folks are definitely going in, so it's gonna be.
Well, not definitely going in, but that's, we, we hope to have, right, we hope to have this mix of uses in there. And so it is hard to say what the peak hours are gonna be. It's gonna be dependent on the ultimate mix of uses. But again, it's, we're always hoping to have this be square footage that allows to have a restaurant liquor license, so we can have multiple food vendors, you can have beer and wine and alcohol served, and folks be able to walk through some of those kind of micro vendors that you'll see in places like East End Market and others.
Well, I was just looking at your, your loading zone. Your loading zone is what, like four parking spaces up front, right? Correct?
It is. I believe the loading zone's more than four spaces, but it's reserved from seven to ten AM every day.
So from seven to ten, is that no parking, nobody can park there?
Correct, it's reserved, loading zone reserved spaces.
Okay, that was gonna be one of my questions. Because I, I could see that being a problem, you know, if, if I came in the morning time, I'm gonna park right up front, plus I came to get my coffee, right?
Sure.
Or if, or if every other spot's taken up, I'm gonna not park there.
Well, and it's eight spaces, I just looked down at the plane, so there's eight spaces for that loading zone, and, and we're sixteen over what code requires, so, so hopefully, you know, folks would, would have sufficient parking as it is, given that we're above the code minimum.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Or you guys have other things? Yeah, well, do you have, Dan, anybody have any questions for Dan?
I'm all for asking Dan questions.
All right, come on, Dan.
Just got.
Any other questions, Dan?
Yes, sir.
Do you, uh, do you have a, an exhibit, do we have an exhibit that shows the access points here? Do we have, uh, just so we didn't?
So these are, these are the three access points.
So they've got the one on Doyle, right? So the, the issue, they're, you're, you're right in that there's, the big vehicles actually park on that because they can't, I think, I know I have driven a big truck sometimes in the drive-through, but it's tough to navigate, seeing these at turn-through, especially when there's a lot of cars acting, because you can't, the way that those cars stack up, they stack coming off of seventeen ninety-two, and then if you're coming off that little side street, you can't, you can't make it in there. So a lot of vehicles have landscape and trailers and whatever, they pull up and they park on those. Out of that, we can blame this project or what's happening, whether that's downstream or upstream, or what, wherever their flow of traffic is going, it's tough. So it's, it's hard to, but I do get the concern, I think we, when we talked at the last meeting, we talked about whether or not it makes sense to make that a right in or right out on limiting the, limiting the idea there's one way, or what makes sense off of that. So did y'all make that, and what was the conclusion?
We, we looked at that, and staff, staff is supportive of this access for a number of reasons. First of all, highly supported by police and fire, because they want to be able to get access in there, they want to be able to surround the building if there's a fire, if there's a police emergency. They don't want to have to go down Horatio and go down a U-turn and come back in. By that time, if someone's having a heart attack, when we could have had access there to get them in faster. Staff has, has been very supportive of that. Also, if, if you have a dilution of traffic, rather than putting all on one access, that's gonna claw up that one or two access points. If you dilute them a little bit more, it, it's going to spread out the traffic on the different roads. So staff has always been very supportive of it. Again, it's a public right-of-way, they have, there's no reason why we can't, there's other businesses that rely on this road, this public right-of-way. So we saw it as an extra way to move traffic in and out, similar to, and I do explain this as a, you know, we learned from our mistake with the Walgreens, Franchise Store Shopping Center not having cross-asses, excuse me, requiring somebody to get back on seventy-nine to just to go next door. Not good planning, not good transportation and engineering, and definitely not good public safety practices.
Yeah, man, like I said, I, I think it's hard to, that's a difficult street, it's also a difficult street because of when you're coming off of seventeen ninety-two, if you want to go down Doyle, you kind of take your, you take a risk that someone's not gonna pay attention to hit you because the traffic going east on Horatio is keep going even when you're trying to make the right into those, those plazas there, so. But again, I think you're, I think the dispersion of the traffic and the lessening on each access point makes sense, and I think it's supported by fire, from, from getting the best access to it, to me, that makes sense. I don't know if you've got the conditions that we have, so I mean, the, the thought, I don't know if anybody else had concerns, but I mean, the, the conditions on eight and nine, did it become eight and nine, or seven or eight?
Yeah, it'd be eight and nine.
Eight and nine. Is just to, my thoughts there, we're getting some mix, making sure this was a mix of uses, because I think one of the things that we're kind of voting on here is the concept of this mixed use project, and the, the fact that this is being brought to us as a mixed use project, but with the list of conditional use, with the list of proposed uses and possible uses, it could be anything. And again, we don't, we don't vote on the user, we vote on uses. And so to me, this was a way of balancing that to say, let's get a mix, let's, let's ensure there's a mix of uses, and that's kind of the best we can do as a planning standpoint, is just. and that's kind of the best we can do as a planning standpoint, is just to, to set this up for, for hopefully, a mixed-use project that looks like what we've been, we've been given. So I, I appreciate the, I'm sure a few of us had contributed to this, uh, to this end product, and I appreciate the applicant for kind of working with them on getting that done. I don't know if anybody else has anything specific on this, mix of use, whether or not they support the conditions, because I think, and these are, I don't know how many people saw this before, or had input, obviously, we can't, uh, yeah, I don't know what that is.
Before tonight, it was zero.
Is that?
Before tonight, it was zero. Most of you were seeing this for the first time. This was based on when, when it, the case was introduced, there were, were some conversations up in the diet, the council about concerns about the mixed uses. So staff and the applicant worked several hours to try to come up with a good balance that we felt would help alleviate any concerns, you know, certain types of uses, or certain mixture, or overallocation of one use to another.
To, to me, the, the way the, the staff and applicant so quickly worked this out, um, and came up with that, that solution in the case, I mean, sincerely, the applicant and building went, they said they're going to build, and, um, if they're not interested in doing this and putting in a party store, and they really want to build the kind of project that we want to see there, and, 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 so I, I thought it was a, a good thing that you brought up, and, um, I'm happy to see they so willingly complied with it.
No, I.
Yeah, that's, uh.
I, I, I think it's, it, you know, we're, we're trying to breed a crystal ball here on what this is going to look like, right? I, I don't think that the project has any hint of, you know, turning itself into a flea market. So I don't think, actually, we have to really worry about that. We're really high-end for the market.
Give me your mouth, Brad.
No, my, that's.
Well, five dollars an over, I mean, that's, right. No, I, I think, I think this is a really great compromise to get, to get kind of over the objective of the hurdles. I think, I'm, on the parking situation, I know you mentioned about maybe potentially having like a right turn or a right-in, right-out situation. You know, I, I'm, I'm assuming that all of the decisions made about the parking, at some point, if down the road, we have a traffic study and it says, you know, this is just not working, we have a dangerous situation here, that the applicant will be willing to work with the city on, on whatever changes would need to be made to that egress there to make sure that, you know, people are not having head-on collisions.
Do you draw a right-in, right-out directly onto a ratio, or?
Any of them.
Right-in, right-out off of Doyle?
Both, because, I mean, you know, Vance's point is, is well-taken, which is, you know, what time of day is this going to be well-used, well, we don't know until we have tenants. So we may end up in a situation where we have three businesses that all become active at five o'clock. Well, we know what happens at that intersection at five o'clock. So maybe we need to look at.
Or at six o'clock.
Or at six o'clock, right. So we may need to look at, at, at future changes to the traffic patterns if that becomes a situation. That would be something that, that we would be able to work on, right?
If it becomes a problem and, and warrants a traffic study, or warrants a traffic light work, or something like that, we can look at that. The, the uses that are proposed here, the mixed-use development actually generates less traffic than a drive-through bank, which, which is existing use for this. So it's, it's a very less traffic generator, the parking meets our parking standards, or overweighs what we require. Again, if it's dispersed on the three public rights ways, staff has no problem with it, and very supportive.
And in the fantasy world, we're all walking there because we are walking through all of Maitland on our vehicles type.
Well, we, we are, and this is, and we'll talk about this later on type, but this, this type of uses exactly the way the city envisioned in their downtown master plan. It is a sense of place, gathering place, where people can be seen, heard, walked to, and raise light to downtown, to this block of downtown. It's, it's everything that has led up to the comp plan we've been asking for as a city.
How much space is being reserved for, um, bicycles? Do we have a bike rack?
We do have bike racks, I, I think it's.
I saw them in a picture, but I don't know that there was nothing.
Yeah, it, um, it meets the code, I think the code's near, bike racks would be one for every ten spots, I believe is what it is. It did meet the code, or whether, uh.
Let's talk about power, because I just wanted to move from, you said Dale's, you said drive-through traffic light, which made Dale.
Ten such bad, so. Which we're eliminating, the drive-through.
So on the, um, on the power, I do think the problem with the power and the undergrounding is we, we will, I think we should look, not now, with this particular project, but in total, we need to look at how we get this done. We're going to, we're going to continually hit these hurdles, which is that if you don't, if you don't start somewhere, and if you don't have a plan, or you don't have like a way to get all of this done, you'll be shifting power from one to the other, and you should, you'll be moving poles, and if we eventually want to get the entire downtown undergrounded, then we need to, we need to have a holistic plan there, not going project by project.
Why didn't he should mention that, Dan?
Because if we go land by land, parcel by parcel, it's going to be impossible to ever get it done. So I do think, as we move forward, trying to look at how we can get this done, and trying to put together how we can, there's ways we can do it, right?
There are ways.
The, the, the multiple ways we can look at this, I think it's worth the investment in trying to come up with a plan to get the power underground throughout that town, so we don't have to face this on a parcel-by-parcel basis.
Man, I love being able to agree with Mike from there while, uh, we talked, we talked about this afternoon specifically, and particularly because this has not been addressed, and we have not invested enough in ourselves and our vision of the future, the prospect of being able to do a citywide undergroundable master plan.
Yeah.
And there are lots of nuances that I understand. It's time. Yeah, we, we let the bounds law firm get away with it, okay? This is going to, that shouldn't put in that context. Not do the undergrounding that our code would have required. And they received a waiver, Dara wants a waiver. I get it, I do, I do, yeah, but, and, you know, this, Mike's been a while pointed out. We're going to wave ourselves into, you know, get it done. And I'm understanding from Dan earlier today, this is not an unattainable goal to shoot for, to do a, that downtown, or, I'm sorry, a citywide, uh, master plan, undergrounding master plan. So, it's time. My, thank you for bringing that up. Now, any other questions? Mike, do you have anything to jumpstart at you? They answered it.
Yeah, no, um, I want to agree with you, is one of the things, and, you know, like, I was listening to Tara talking, shooting, you know, about, you know, the size and having, you know, a rebuild that, you know, uh, they're not required to do the undergrounding. Well, we just made the copy church do the undergrounding. And, you know, they're doing it already. So we're, we're, we told the copy church to do something that we're not required to be, these people. And I've, and I've called Dan and talked to Dan, and, you know, um, one of the things was that we could do an assessment later on down the line. Well, I don't know how much an assessment is, and one of my, my worries on this, as a food and beverage guy, I think this is great, I love this concept, I, I totally do. Tara, it's a knockout. My problem is, I don't want our citizens to financially carry this problem. I don't think, you know, and I talked to Dan about, you know, maybe we could do something jointly with them to get it solved as a city, you know, because it's still in the best interest of the citizens. So that's why I was thinking, you know, we could maybe use that all the time. So those are some of my thoughts that I just wanted to share out there, but, um, yeah, because I think everything else around Publix is undergrounded, that whole area is undergrounded, it's up for right there, is that correct?
Yeah, that block, well, that block.
Yeah, that little block right there.
And it clearly has no interest whatsoever in undergrounding the ratio.
Yeah, I, I just like to interject that this really isn't comparable to the church. They, they made an agreement to do that. So as a condition of their permit, they agreed to underground that, and it didn't affect their option, because it's.
Well, they didn't have the financial, you know, they, they came out with, they, that would have been a good idea.
They, they didn't sign an agreement and agree to vary lines, and then come back and try to back out of it, so. It, it's not really comparable.
Also, it's not money, it's, it's more than just the money, Dan, it's a logistic issue, and.
Yeah, there are so many differences.
The, um, I mean, I do think we need to look at this from a master planning standpoint, but I think that to, to hold up a project, a quick side of the project, because we haven't, we haven't put together the plan yet, or the mechanism to do it, is maybe not the, the right from a timing standpoint. Obviously, we could have rewound this nine or five years ago, but.
Yeah.
To do it now is difficult to.
Right now, it costs us eight spaces, eight parking spaces, like, there are different one up there. Eight parking spaces at a quarter million dollars. Okay, play with deuce, propose one. Now, I get it, I get it.
But it puts, it, but it puts, it puts the problem on someone else's line.
And, and you're absolutely right, in that that improvement would not just be for the benefit of this property, because it would also have a positive impact on other folks nearby as well. So I get it, I do. And it doesn't always appear that way, but I get it, uh, so.
Did we put in the plans to get easements? Should we need it? I know, like, we talked about that, what, what we needed to put in there in order to, that's in there.
Yeah, that's actually the first condition of approval.
So the, no, but it's not on, I thought you said, I thought you said it had to be on the plan.
The first condition of approval is that they provide all the easements to the city, for the sidewalks and streetscapes, and any of the utilities prioritization to the CO.
No, that, okay, but that's, that's all you, I thought you said at the meeting that it had to be shown on their actual site plan. Now, am I misremembering how that was? I thought there was worry about how you can enforce that condition, there was, I, maybe I'm misremembering. I thought there was something you said that it had to go on the actual, that, whatever. If you all are good with it, Dan, I thought it was, I thought there was concern that it had to be on the actual site plan. Now.
Okay, any other questions or comments before we go?
Well, the last one, what would, if, if we, down the road, if we come to them, or like, we're going to do undergrounding assessment, are, are we looking, just so I know in my mind, are we looking, say, twenty thousand dollars, thirty thousand, what would it be? I think it all depends on a lot of different factors. I don't know how big of an area we're doing. Obviously, the bigger that area, the cheaper it gets. And you do it piece by piece, it gets very expensive. And then it'll probably be a, a, a rich share with about linear footage along the project frontage of each parcel that gets the assessment show. It's, it's hard to say without knowing what the cost of doing, the undergrounding is at the time, and how big of an area we're doing.
Those are those three switch gears, and we've been getting more than just this particular property. And so kind of, right, a shared discussion, calculation of what other properties adjacent, that, okay, that there will be. So it's not easy, I get you there. That's a good question. Go ahead.
Mike, I'm all, just to address the question on the easement. So the condition of approvals that we have to provide in an easement for public purposes for utilities, sidewalks, and streetscapes, including the designated activity, activity areas and sidewalks, prioritizations of our CO, all of those areas are designated on our plan. And we have a draft easement agreement that we had previously sent, which would now get reviewed by city legal that shows and gives a legal description of where those areas actually are for the easement for the future.
I think, I think, what, because I thought there was, maybe, um, like I said, I thought there was something that had to be on the actual plan. And so you're saying, once you actually designate where they are.
That, that becomes the easement area, that's required of the condition one.
Okay, any other thoughts before we let the public tell us what they think? All right. Anybody from the public, like, you don't throw your hands, okay? Uh, the, uh, anybody from the public, Mike, to address this specific agenda, Jennifer, you, you can do. Now, uh, if you would, try to socially distance yourselves as you kind of line up to speak back here, and give us your name and address, and, uh, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, Scott Baker, 900 Perelman Road, uh, Ashley Maitland. And, um, yeah, I was going to say that, um, I appreciate your comments about the, the Goting Plaza in Maitland. I think it's a long time since I've recorded. More recently, I remember where the comic book store is being an open fire. So I kind of feel like that part of the ratio has been kind of like a dead spot. And I think this would really kind of rejuvenate, this project would rejuvenate that street. I think that as far as having, I think that it seems like the, the person, like, that company's going through, did the due diligence would do, as far as with the, um.
On the way off, go ahead.
With the undergrounding, I'm, I'm full in support of underground utilities, for sure, but, um, I just kind of think that, this is similar to Fairbanks Avenue in Winter Park. I mean, imagine if we were to go to Four Rivers or Hunger Street, or Lombardi's and say, look, you can't, you can't come in here because you're not underground with the utilities. Uh, I feel like it's kind of a similar scenario, when you got something that'd be really cool. I think it'd be a shame to reject them just because there's a couple, um, lucky pools on, on site.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks, Jennifer.
How are you today?
Just pretending like I know what I'm doing.
Yeah, me too. Jennifer King, 1651 Shawnee Trail. I'm here in full support of this project. The Barbers are known for a very long time, and, um, the city talks a lot about walkability and family in this town, and I think this project is the epitome of that. I've heard concerns about pedestrians and cyclists. Um, I'm very concerned about crossing over 1792 over here, because people don't know right-of-way laws and red lights. With my dog, he's almost gotten hit many, many times, and would never cross the street for my children. The, uh, when other developments are struggling to reach completion and success, we've got a previous developer that wants to come to this city, that's proven themselves in neighboring communities, and to pass this opportunity of redevelopment, economic success, tax revenue, and job growth would be really negligent for my daughters. So this is a project that I think would be amazing, and would bring up property values in the surrounding areas, look at what, um, other areas, the, oh, my, one blank, the, uh, Corin, no, not Corin. Yeah, East End Market, look at East End Market, it's on the real estate in that area as well. So this is going to be a normal project, and I really hope that you guys pass this unanimously.
Thank you.
Mr. Burges. Good afternoon, evening. Gus Burges, 621 Dahmer Drive, a 25-year resident of Maitland, and a alumnus of Maitland Junior Hall. Anyway, so I was, uh, going to the airport Saturday to drop off my daughter to go back to law school from COVID, we got three months of COVID, and I mentioned, uh, stale coffee, and man, her ears perked up immediately, and I told her, well, maybe we'll get one in Maitland. And my wife, her ears perked up. And so it's, it's amazing what the chemicals in coffee will do to the owners. So, um, so I'm here, obviously, 100% in support of this project, and I think it's awesome. Addressing the undergrounding of the utilities, I think, uh, undergrounding is wonderful. We kind of lost our opportunity many years ago when we failed to, uh, purchase our, uh, power utility. We, we could have done it then, and we would be rolling. But I think that in this instance, you just have to take it, you know, you have to take each project as it comes and look at the project and say, that's onerous, that's $250,000 on a project of this size. It's just too much for, for the owner to bear, so. I think you guys use your good judgment and say, well, in this case, we should, we should set that aside because of a lot of these reasons, so. So, uh, to echo what Jennifer said, um, I plan on riding my bike, so I would ask the owner of the developer, if this goes through, please put lots of bike racks there for us. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Yes, sir.
I'm Dr. DeWalt, five four one Dahmer Drive. Been a resident for about thirty years in Maitland. Kind of enjoying that we're getting a little bit of critical mass downtown. It hasn't quite taken hold, but I enjoy the Independence Lane businesses right here and the Partners Market and some other things that are coming along. So I think we're going in the right direction, I think. I visualize this as being another move in that direction. I don't think it's a highly intensive development. So I think it stays in character with what we have in Maitland. And so, um, I'm, you'd favor this.
Thanks, Dr.
My name is Josh Langholz, eight twenty-eight Tuscarora Trail. Uh, we lived in Maitland about seven years ago from Ballpark. And what was great over there that I loved was the walkability. It's all the restaurants, things to do, you know, take my kids, do things. Did, you know, I got to personally watch, uh, the transformation of Auden Park when they put in Eastside Market and John Wright did all the work to set that up. And it was just a foreign concept, a new thing. And it's just been a great addition to that area. Uh, I have to commend, I love the Independence Lane. We ride our bikes from Dahmer over there, you know, multiple times with our kids. It's starting to become the city that I always kind of visualized it being with the infill coming in. I can't think of a better thing to put into that bank building than for sale for an attorney. And I don't ever see banks coming back, you know, retail presence. This is the perfect thing to put in there. Someone else is going to have to deal with issues, you know. I just can't think of something that would be better than this to go in. My wife currently drives from Dahmer to their other project that they built over off of Orange Avenue to meet with clients at Foxdale, do work, use it as an office. She can ride or drive much closer. That would be wonderful. And I just think it's a perfect infill project for what the city of Maitland needs to become and where I see it go. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Jeff. Is this for me? They just undercut it. The mayor's law.
Glenn Jaffe, three ninety-one West Trotter Drive. So my proximity of my house to this property, I'll probably never use one of your parking spaces for the record, it's walkable. And I, too, twenty plus years ago, bought a house nearby, our supposed downtown, with this in mind. So between it and what's happening on the Independence is great. And I've never seen more bicyclists around Maitland with these things than ever. So, uh, in terms of the, the basic land planning and the discussion around, uh, what to do with Doyle, it bridge streets. I mean, the most basic land planning will tell you, in order to have a successful downtown, you have to have bridge streets. Because if you're worried about Doyle, you should be equally, if not more worried about what happens to Packwood, what happens to Swoop, what happens to Horatio, which are already problem streets. So if there is somebody who wants to drop onto an alleyway, that's better for the other roads. And the mayor, you know, you, you've seen this like I have for a long time. You were only one of two people probably at a meeting fighting what happened at Walgreens and, and with Francesco's because we knew it was blocking us off from another access point to get in and out of a project. So, uh, in terms of underground utilities, Gus said, you know, years ago as a city, we had an opportunity to buy our utilities back. And actually, I, I, I disagree with what was said. We do want to distribute this cost to all of the homeowners within the city because we all want it, we all benefit. It's not this property's fault that somehow eight holes got stuck on one, one acre site. That's our city's fault somehow at large. We let that happen. And we can't put the onus on one project for, and, and this is an alarming thing to us as a city. It took this project, which is exactly what we want, is what we've asked for in our master plan. It took him two years to get this far for eight thousand square feet of an existing building. And we should be disturbed about that as a city. We should be alarmed because we have a lot of these small projects that we're asking for, but not everybody can afford to take two years. In fact, what happens is they walk away from us. And that's a problem too for us to get this downtown. I would just tell you, um, uh, Peacock Ford, you know, that was a project that is not in our master plan. We didn't want a car lot. And lo and behold, they renovated and we didn't underground the power lines that are down seventeen ninety-two. And these are the things that we want to do. So the onus needs to be on all of us to try and do something with our power lines. And again, help make this project go forward because Foxville Coffee, my daughters get up and drive to where Park for this. And that causes a problem on our roads too. And this is one more opportunity for us to be self-contained. Thanks.
Great. Thanks, Lauren. Yes, go ahead.
Hi there. Good evening. My name is Mary Johnson. I live at nine thirty-one Camelot. And I just wanted to get up and provide support for this project, just like, uh, Josh and Jennifer said. I have two young children. They're six and eight. They're in their prime of loving riding their bicycles. And we ride, it's exactly three miles to get to Sanford Brewing. In fact, my husband and my children are over there now and they're with their bikes. But being a mother.
They're just sort of wobbling over there.
Yeah, exactly. No, but being a mother of two very active sons and also being very proud of her city and wanting what has happened down here. And hopefully, in this post-COVID landscape, you know, we can start to have the downtown get downs and, you know, the parties. I went to the last one before COVID and that was so much fun. So I think this project would only bring more of this energy, more of this sense, just like other folks have expressed this evening of, we love this town and we're going to walk here and we're going to ride our bikes here. And we're not going to take our business to Winter Park. We're not going to take our business to Baldwin Park or Downtown. We're going to stay here. We're going to bring our business here. Um, I think it would be great too if this brings more small business. You know, again, in this post-COVID landscape and we've all come together in the last three months and we're saying, support small business and support small business. Yeah, let's do it. Let's bring more small businesses. Don't bring in Chili's. Bring, you know, a Sanford Brewing or a Hounds Tooth or other of those. So I generally, or I genuinely hope that you all will provide your support because we're really excited about it. We really think it would bring something new, um, especially with the social spaces to our downtown. So, thank you.
Thank you. Maria, if this lady's phone number, we need a cheerleader. All right. Very good. Thank you. Anybody else like to address the council on this specific agenda item? Hearing that, see, now we'll bring it back to, uh, council.
We cut off the timing real quick.
Yeah, we do.
We have talked about this one and Dan, we have talked a lot about just how we work on this process. I mean, fans, we, we were occupied together for a while. And so I know that that's something we're looking at. So I mean, just the overall process, how we move things through and timing and all of that. We're in the process of reviewing our, like, development code. I know that's, we've talked about this for years, about the best process to do it, the way we hold hearings and process just in general. And so I know that's being looked at. So I think that that point is taking the course core.
Yeah.
And so we're, I think we're, we're trying to still keep the community involvement that we've always had, but also looking at how we can make the process more efficient, sort of, there's a balance there.
Yeah, it's, um, I think we're getting developers, we don't need to run to all nine levels without this. But anyway, as, as much as I enjoy hearing everybody's drop, it's kind of a good, a staff motion on this.
So does he need to have any caveats on that one or is that?
Assuming that is all nine conditions.
Every.
Plus, plus the, uh, ten conditions and all of the, no, that.
Yeah. I think you guys wrapped it up fine nicely.
So the good motion is supportive. He spoiled us with that first motion, you understand?
What's that?
He spoiled us with that.
Yeah.
There, yeah, I didn't want to, I've been kind of lost in all the, uh, so I'm just going with, um, simplest kind of.
Okay, so the, the simple motion is all of the staff renovations plus eight nine ten, correct?
Correct.
I'll second that one.
All right.
I wish it was our first one, but.
Yeah. Any other comments? Questions? Uh, no, I'm not personally comfortable with the aggression, aggression with Doyle. And that would keep me from being able to support the motion. But, uh, I certainly understand and understand the advantages for our first responders, you know, to like that. I'm leery of, you know, Jennifer's kids and her dogs and, you know, other people negotiating their way in our, in our light pet way to work on a tight Doyle. But we have a motion in a second.
No, I will just say, um, I, I realized Tara Lawyer had the answer on the Foxdale there, but she will have a revolt on her front doorstep if we don't actually have a Foxdale show up. So just putting that out there, I know where you live.
Well, and personally, I'll never move project based on a tenant, just like a tenant.
Mayor, just before you vote, Maria, did you want to mention, we did take comment by email as well? So for the record, we just get that.
We had twelve emails from Maitland, Dahmer, and supporters of this project.
Okay.
I have countless more, but I didn't.
Countless?
Countless.
Something compared.
I spoke to about three or four residents who have called me to support it.
Okay.
We have lots of coffee lovers here, huh? Do you have any coffee?
I'm after the IPA.
Yeah. So any further questions or comments? It's just parading on all the road.
Thank you. Councilman Hall Harrison?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Wild?
Aye.
Councilman Jeffrey?
Aye.
Mayor McDonald?
Nay. Okay. So, uh, we've got a foreplay, a, a, a foreplay ordinance. Uh, Ms. Maria.
The ordinance of the city of Maitland, Hall, amendment, chapter twenty, section twenty-nine-six, the Maitland law, to eliminate a crashing struggle on the use of fertilizers during restricted season, providing for provocation, sever milling, conflict, or ineffective aid.
Woo-hoo! Great.
This ordinance proposes an amendment to the section of the code that regulates fertilizer management. The proposed change prohibits application of fertilizers that contain nitrogen and phosphorus to turf or landscape for the restricted season of June first through September thirtieth. Staff recommends that city council adopt this proposed ordinance. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Got any questions, comments? I do. Cam, do, does this exclude Dale McDonald from being able to put fertilizer down his yard?
Uh, between June first and September thirtieth, he would not be able to use anything with nitrogen or phosphorus.
That specified in the ordinance?
Yes.
Yeah. Wow. How'd you catch that?
It's not something, it's something that we're going to actually look at education for, to let people know that, um, this would be our ordinance and the negative effects. Not sure if you're aware of, uh, FDEP has total maximum abandoned loads, the TMDLs, in certain areas. Maitland is a part of two that are identified right now. Both of which are restricted to, we have to find a reduction in total nitrogen and total phosphorus.
Going into our legs.
Yes. So we have to continually find new ways to find reductions in these, these weapons. And a lot of what we're trying to do is put out education and hopefully, you know, have our residents understand the effect of, of what we're doing.
Question, Mike?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Anybody?
Good.
Okay. Uh, anybody from the public like to address this particular agenda? Come on back.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of state council. I'm, I'm representing five separate trade organizations who have operations, um, in the city. I request five minutes, um, if that's acceptable.
Well, let's go to three and we'll see how, or how a lot of.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Matt Keraway. I'm the executive director of the Environmental Research and Education Foundation located in Maitland. We represent green industry stakeholders throughout Florida, including those with operations in the city. We communicate with you extensively on this proposed amendment. Your current ordinance without this amendment, the Orange County version, has long been considered the best, one of the best models in Florida. It was created in two thousand nine and has survived two extended and growing ordeals of workshops, broad public input, and extensive academic and scientific testimony in public hearings for both the Orange County Environmental Protection Commission and its board of county commissioners, culminating in the unanimous vote of both of those bodies in two thousand seventeen to preserve it in its current form with the professional exemption act, which was the staff's recommendation from the outset. Its beauty rests in two key features. First, its proper implementation prioritizes education, which is where the real systemic and cost-effective benefits are for water quality protection. And it is, as we stated earlier, teaching the public about responsible water use. You don't need to teach us, we literally wrote the books on it, et cetera. Second, rejects the idea of enhancing discriminatory, one-size-fits-all summer blackout by acknowledging the evidence-based water protective benefits of the decades-long implements of best management practices by green industry, including licensed lawn care professionals as embodied in the sod, golf, nursery and grain industries' BMP manuals, comprehensive research-based documents, the Florida Urban Turf Rule that's part of state statute, and highly specific peer-reviewed studies on the behavior of plants and fertilizer, especially as it relates to what happens in the summer in Florida. Like Orange County, Hillsborough County, Collier County, Citrus County, Hernando County, the town of Jupiter, Seminole Counties, County, Seminole Counties own city of Sanford and others have all specifically rejected the Seminole County version of the ordinance like the one you're proposing with the recognition of these BMPs as an evidence-based element of their successful water policy. Stripping away the professional exemption and isolation takes a fairly nuanced ordinance and on the basis of no evidence turns it into an instrument of regulatory punishment of those who are doing the right thing, who are in fact collaborators, not culprits, who by virtue of their experience, training and licensing serve you as the first line of defense in responsible fertilizer practices. Punishing them is profiling them and it defies evidence, fairness and common sense regardless of how well-intentioned they may be. Namely, there is absolutely and positively zero evidence that the precision applications and feeding done by professionals in the all-important summer growing season in any way harm the environment. In fact, we presented considerable peer-reviewed evidence, to a commentary in our communications and attachments and my last testimony at the year, which is a public hearing. We are, like you, focused on water quality protection. And what can harm our water quality are not the informed and already highly regulated practices of professionals but rather acts of ignorance and carelessness, fertilizing driveways, sidewalks, blowing grass pluggings down the storm drain, or using the wrong materials. Our professionals don't do any of those things, period. So left as it is, your current ordinance still gives you the tools you need to address those legitimate concerns. So to conclude, I encourage you to preserve your already fair and effective ordinance, reject the amendment on the grounds that it's discriminatory and is not evidence-based. Voting for this amendment, in fact, is voting for a fertilizer free-for-all, not improved outcomes. The professionals will absolutely comply as they always have. But what about those who no longer have professional assistance? So we ask you to take the action of rejecting this amendment. Thank you.
You did good, though.
Thank you. Did I make it?
Yeah, you did. I'm impressed. I'm very impressed.
The five-minute version was Academy of Warden material. I'd like to go with that.
Thank you again. Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. This is Mayor of the Council. My name is Arvando Combs. I'm at eighteen eleven Chippewa Trail here in Maitland. And I'm involved in agriculture. I'm involved in green industries. I'm a certified crop advisor. It's awarded by the, the American Association of Agronomists, uh, crop and soil societies. I'm part of the Florida Turf Grass Association. I'm a certified turf grass professional. And I review all this. I'm a past president of the Florida Turf Grass Association. And I emailed everyone on this council earlier in the middle of COVID. And I emailed everyone on this council earlier, in the middle of COVID, about this issue. Because I think it's, uh, interesting that all the science, all the peer-reviewed science, and we hear a lot about the importance of peer review science, points to the fact that the model ordinance of Orange County is the way to go. So I don't know what we've learned in the last six months or what have we, that, that makes us, uh, as a city, different than most of the successful areas around us that have studied the issue, have, you know, received input, have engaged with the stakeholders, engaged with the industry, and would rather have our regular residents that are not certified, that are not trained, that are not licensed, that are not educated on the proper use of fertilizer materials, and take the chance that an unenforceable ordinance will be, you know, exempted from the professionals that are educated, that are required to take continuing education on a yearly basis, that are motivated economically. Nobody wants to put out more fertilizer than they have to. For us, the industry calculates it to the square foot by the pin and fraction of a pin. So there's no motivation to do anything to harm the environment on the contrary. I think it's one of these mantras across the industries, beyond the green industry and into agriculture, is if we don't take care of our own, uh, regulation, self-regulate, then we, we wouldn't prompt government at all levels to take some action, all the way to the EPA at a federal level. So I would urge you to reconsider if that's already a consideration. Stay in with the lawn ordinance of Orange County and, uh, you know, let us all as residents of Mayland enjoy, not just the walkability, but getting out in our kayaks on the lake and, uh, enjoy the water harmony, and enjoy also the green areas that are mostly tended to by the professionals who are educated, certified, and that are going to do the best to not contribute to the problem. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, councilpeople and mayor. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Dr. Eric Brown. I'm the director of agronomy for Massey Services. And I'm here on behalf of the Florida Turf Grass Association. I'm a scientist and I do research on soils and plants. And my motto is, I take care of plants and people. Really what we want to do. But as Armando stated, all we want to do is have professionals do their jobs. The simple thing to ask is to leave the professionals to do their jobs because they're doing it correctly. You know, protecting our water with healthy plants and tunnels and filters, the plants in the urban landscape need to be cared for, and that protects our water. So please consider staying with the ordinance the way it is. The Orange County ordinance was a compromise, it came out, that I think is very good. It's a prohibition for everybody in the county for these nutrients, except if you're licensed and trained and certified to do it properly. On behalf of Massey Services and the Florida Turf Grass Association, please reject changing the ordinance.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else like to address this specific agenda? That'll be the time. Here you go, Ms. Maria, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council.
Mayor, uh, Clark wants to advise you of public input we received.
One or two advises the public in the public.
Okay, we received five emails from residents supporting the ordinance that presented, and we received 21, uh, to postpone the adoption or does not support this ordinance.
Okay. All right, thank you.
There's 21 were residents.
Yeah, they weren't all residents. There was like one from Boca or something, right?
Yeah, they were from all over the place. It's the first move of the world, I hear. Okay, questions, comments? Kim, I had, I had a quick question, if I could kick us off. Now, are there other municipalities in Orange County that are subject to the Orange County, fertilizer ordinance, that have proposed any similar revisions that you're aware of?
I don't know.
I should have asked you that question earlier.
Um, I believe that, uh, you did receive something from the Sierra Club that
Yeah, yeah.
gave you a list of all
Right.
other communities that
And I guess my question is, are we jumping out there, breaking new ground? Again, what we had known over the years, even adopting the new revised Orange County ordinance, was a big step in the right direction for us.
And it still isn't as restrictive as the FDEP model ordinance.
Okay.
It's some of the work we have.
So, uh...
Does it have to be DDP ordinance, it's structured?
Yeah, I mean, it, it, uh, it already has those in it, and, um...
And we've got these killer sticker magnets, you know, in our cars, or, well, uh, in our trucks, that, well, uh, not fertilizing it. Presuming that, correct, I'm a face, that was this a recommendation made through Lakes Advisory Board to?
They reviewed it.
Right.
Um, this was one where just taking that next step of looking at our ordinance and what others have done.
Right.
And looking also at some of the things that we're going to have to do with reductions. Kind of every little bit helps.
Sure.
I'm not aware, I know that there was a study that was provided that really was addressing groundwater leaching and turf quality, um, but I'm, I'm not aware of anything that actually addresses runoff. You know, when we get these big rains like we have the past few days, of how, you know, applying that fertilizer, you know, within certain times where I do. Uh, I've, I've asked around and I'm not aware of anything that, um, that exists where that's been addressed.
All right, thank you. Questions, comments?
Uh, comments? I listened, so I think three to five of us here all served on the Lakes Advisory Board, so we understand, you know, how important it is that, I mean, our city's, what, 20% water?
Almost 30.
Almost 30% water. So, uh, we have to be very protective of, of waterways. You know, serving on lakes a long time, being a, a lake geek, I consider myself.
I would never say that.
I, I am. Every time I would see one of these professionals, these trained professionals, I would go up and ask, you know, what distance do you need to stay back from the lake edge? And it would range anywhere from three feet to 15 feet to, I don't know, to, you know, just all over the place. So, you know, so I don't know how well they're trained. Even my best friend, Coco Beach, he did it for a while, and I asked him how far it needs to stay away. He's like, I don't know, I just have to go up until, you know, I think a little too close. So, that's pretty much my experience with that. I mean, this, I've done this for years, is every time I've seen it, from all different aspects. I think, uh, training's kind of an issue on that. So, I, I think, you know, talking about the summertime rains in Florida, it's just like it is now. We never, we're going to have rain every day at 1:00 for 15, 20 minutes, and then again at nighttime. So, I, I'm a fan of this, so I'll be supportive.
Thoughts? I think, any thoughts?
I mean, this, this would, from an industry standpoint, this really eliminates, I mean, these things are done on a quarterly basis, right? So really, what we're talking about is eliminating one cycle in the middle of summer. I mean, I get they were blocking off six months, but if anybody is smart, you're just going to do it the last week of May and the first week of October. And so you're, you're pretty much eliminating the quarter application that would happen. Yeah, experts are shaking their head, but I think that's probably the way that's going to happen. But, uh, I don't know what, I, I think my question is, and also it's not really, I mean, you're going to have a resident, I know it's not currently that, but I mean, a resident goes into Home Depot or Lowe's on July 15th, they don't know not to buy a certain type of fertilizer, right? And
Well, I think if they go in Seminole County, they don't know.
In Seminole County?
They, they have some.
Do they pull it? Do they pull the product?
I'm not sure if they pull it, but I'm fairly, their, their ordinance is farther reaching than ours is, and I believe in doubt about the sale of those products. But I know there were notifications placed that you can't use it during this time and that it was clear in Seminole County. So I'm sure they did that in cooperation with the county, and I'm sure if you go to Ace Hardware or anywhere else, they still buy this fertilizer.
Do I get Costco as well?
Costco, you know.
You know, Costco stock.
I talked to, uh, the guy that does ours, and I thought, I thought they don't apply it anyway in the summer.
I just had mine.
You all know this.
I just had mine, and they, they didn't apply, but I'm in Seminole County, so there's a ban anyway. So I don't know, it's a ban or they just won't apply.
Can I get to the point about being the first one to be into this one? But, you feel good about, you feel good about it?
Oh, I think so.
Um, so, now the Darcelo waste allocation from DDP, what, what do they look at?
Um, they're doing testing over time, and they're saying, uh, you know, is there a reduction? Or is there something that's unhealthy with the lake?
What, what sources do they measure? Do they measure stormwater, outfalls, or where do they measure to get an idea of what we change for them?
Well, just like with our monitoring and our testing, they're using that data. Uh, they're taking some of their own monitoring as well, since they're looking at these larger basins. We are split up between the Little Wakava Canal, which is basically the west half of the city. And it does have, um, I don't remember the percentage reduction that everybody that's contributing to it has to meet over time. That's with our, through our NPDS permit.
Right.
Um, the other one that has been just recent has been Lake Jessup, that we're actually, yes. That was fairly recent, that was in January of this year, that they said that we have to look at reducing nitrogen and phosphorus over time. The other half of the city is actually Lake Jessup, and, which is a very large
Right.
basin, so they're working on, um, a basin management.
And they're actually lighting that up in the political jurisdictions and saying, Mayland's contributing to Lake Jessup.
It's, it's not that, it's, it's the water basin that you're in, your watershed that you're in, and so, you know, we're contributing. So, you know, I'm not saying that our amount is a large piece, but we still have to show
Right, they're looking at groundwater, groundwater as well as surface water, and groundwater, they change?
They are looking, I think they do some monitoring, I know with, with
Slap it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, there's a, there's obviously a nutrient crisis in Florida. I mean, you have to look at the red tide, you have to look at the algae. You got, you look at our springs and, and you see them, I, I used to be a cave diarist for years, and I've seen how the springs are turning green with algae. And, um, whenever you want to do anything, whether it's with septic tanks, whether it's with sewage, whether it's with, with non-point sources like fertilizer, there's always arguments why you can't do that, why, why it doesn't, you know, why that won't do it, solve the problem. And meanwhile, the utilization of our waterways just, just gets worse. So, um, I, you know, I, I support this, I think we need to get moving. I don't think there's any pressing need to, to water or fertilize brass in the Seminole, and it's deep growth area anyway, so, um, I would, I would strongly support this ordinance.
I think a lot of people, I know, on my lake, we, we irrigate from the lake, and that already has nutrients in it, so it really already gives the fertilizer there to the lake water.
Um, I'll just come out and say that I'm fully in favor of this. I think that, um, you know, there's no contest between the interest of having green grass versus fresh clean water. And it seems like an easy answer to me. You know, we, we know what these chemicals are doing to our water sources, we've known for a while. Regardless of having only professionals be the people who are applying it, and the concern that if somebody can't have a professional come out to apply it during the summer month, they're going to race off to do-it-yourself fertilizer and, you know, buy a bottle of something and pour it on your grass. I'm sure there's probably situations where that will happen, but I, I, I commend the city for the bold step of wanting to get out in front of this, and I think that anything we can do to improve the quality of our water is very important, and we should do everything we have.
No, remember, we're running for our money where our mouth is regarding 20-plus million dollars, give or take, in Nambur Gills, where a whole lot of septic systems are going to go away.
Amen.
Now, we only promised in 2002, the annex to the 450-odd houses, whatever the number is over there. And we haven't delivered until 2019 on Inmanus, so, and that's, we've done a four-year phase process, right, sure? And that, uh, so, life is getting better in the, uh, in the Lake Jessup basin, uh, large scale now. So, you know, our mouth is where, our mouth money's going where our mouth is, a bunch of money.
Yep.
Now, right thing to do 18 years after it should have been done. Now, that's one, this is a different discussion. Uh, I am one of those bumbling, incompetent amateurs that does their own, his own yard. And I like green grass. And they're pleasantries, but I understand the point. And I'm sure that, uh, maybe I have used in the past, used stuff, you know, with, with low phosphorus and low, uh, low nitrogen counts, and, of course, that's why my grass hated me for it. But, uh, so, you know, I, I, you know, I, uh, I applaud the initiative, uh, uh, that we make the catalyst, we all, this is here, share it, right? I consider it lakes underwater, and Mayland is 25-plus percent, actually.
I think you got the last, the first official number, somewhere around there.
Close to that.
Yeah, probably.
Yes.
Sorry, go higher right now.
Probably. Yeah, you know, so, uh, so 6.49 square mile city, and 30% of it's underwater, with facts. So, uh, I understand. And that's part of what makes us who we are. And I, I get that. All right, any further questions? Here now, we've got to be heard from the public.
Mayor, I move to adopt an ordinance enlisting section 20-dash-96 of the city code to amend the Orange County Fertilizer Management Ordinance in the city of Mayland, comma, for the use of fertilizers during restricted season.
As a lake geek, I love the second half.
And he did that when I asked him.
Exactly. I can do it if you can. All right. We have a motion.
I give it a second.
Were you ready for that?
No, I was, yes.
All right, so we have a motion, second. Any further conversation or discussion? Questions? Here you go, Ms. Maria.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Wild?
Aye.
Councilman Jeffrey?
Aye.
Councilman Norman Paul Harrison?
Aye.
Mayor McDonald?
I'm looking forward to the first opportunity night to vote along with all of you. Aye. Okay. Okay, uh, now, where are we? Uh, Ms. Maria, you want to read the title?
In ordinance of
In ordinance of the, in ordinance of the City of Mayland, Florida, amending chapter two administration article three personnel system of the Mayland Code of Orders, section two dash five-two, personnel policies and procedures, and section two dash five-three, same amendment. City managers have the authority to update and administer changes to the personnel policies and procedure, providing for conflict, providing for several ability, providing for the best of days.
All right, thank you. Uh, Sharon, you want to address some questions?
Sure, this is the public hearing, um, that was set at the first reading at our last meeting, and this is about to remove the personnel policies and procedures from the code as, um, something that has to be adopted by ordinance, allowing us to do administrative updates. So, most of the issues that come to us now are administrative, they're, have to do with something that came down from fair labor standards, something that came from our labor attorney. If there are any changes that impact the budget, so it relates to benefits, um, anything like that, anything promotional policies, things like that, it will come to you during the budget time and there are recommendations for changes.
Anybody have any questions, Sharon? Ms. Theresa told me to do exactly what Sharon said, so I'm prepared for that. My thoughts, this is a no-brainer. Anybody from the public like to address this specific agenda item? If you are, and you're worried about quality of your life. Hearing that, we'll call it the public period, like, yes, council.
You got it on your reading list. I'm gonna take your crap down.
No, you're doing good, well, I'm doing good.
Tell Dale a question you're lucky.
Yeah, because if you're worried about this, now the public.
Uh, I'll make a motion, move to adopt an ordinance, amending section two point five-two of the code, ordinance to personnel policies and procedures.
We have a motion, report's fit number two. For a second. Let's do a second. We have a second, all right, can you put a comment? All right, Ms. Maria.
Councilman Wild.
Aye.
Councilman Guthrie.
Aye.
Councilwoman Paul Harrison.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor McDonald.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Ms., Ms. Theresa. Uh, all right, where are we?
Charter review.
Charter review, just one jumps up, I need that, it does. All right, uh, Ms. Maria, you wanna address, read the title?
In ordinance of the City of Mayland, Florida, creating a charter review commission, providing that the commission will propose amendments to the charter of the City of Mayland, Florida by report, providing for composition and eligibility of the commission, providing that the majority of the authority for the commission be submitted to the city council, providing for several ability, providing for effective date.
All right, very good, uh, I'm going to, oh, you did, Miss Sharon?
Yes, so this, um, is the ordinance that had been reviewed by the city attorney, we saw that philosophy, he did recommend we institute bylaws to turn right around in the agenda, which he also reviewed. The only thing I added to this, uh, for looking at it, was I had the sunset provision, so whether, when you accept their, accept their report, or by December, because on December thirty-first, it's too late to get anything on the ballot, so they would sunset either way. And that just keeps you having to do another ordinance and advertise another ordinance, they just, they go by.
Makes sense, because in order to do that.
Save yourself some advertising.
Yeah, uh, so in order to get that done, if you, as you're working backwards, we need to have some recommendation report from a charter review commission by maybe first of October?
Yeah, Septem- September, I mean, hopefully they have something, and that's a pretty, that's a pretty aggressive schedule, so.
But we're gonna appoint the smartest people the city has to offer, right?
Right, but you still have a number of, you know, close down, there's still have to have a number of public hearings, you still have to, you know, if the, if the commi- commission wants to investigate them, then there's legal questions, and so, it's a small task.
All right, very good, anybody have any questions or comments? I know that, uh, those of us veterans have seen this before, that's an interesting process. Uh, you know, Cliff used to be, you know, I have all his hair, and it's a different color. Uh, anybody from the public like to address this specific agenda item? Hearing that, all right, we'll bring it back to council. Uh, the, what you would like from us now is simply Sharon a format?
So, if you make a motion to approve this and it passes, uh, we have the bylaws coming up later on in decisions. At that point, if you want to give this guidance, the thought was, we would put it out for residents to apply, just like we did for other boards, and you might wanna get the word out to people who you think have a background for that, it's technical, you know, a lot of it's technical, um...
Yeah.
Put it on your, to the city with the charter, um, 'cause all of you and anyone else can turn suggestions to them, but...
Right.
Sort of need to, and, and in, in the bylaws, you see there's some, you write it with some caveats about what they should and shouldn't be doing, so that they know upfront, you know, where they should be going. But that was the thought, is that we would just put it out, the people who had interest, residents who had interest, apply.
So right now, we're just creating a commission?
Correct, correct.
Um, I'll make a motion to introduce the ordinance to create the charter of the commission.
Very popular motion, all right, so we have a motion, the second, any further discussion or comment?
Who's one of those two?
You pick one, yeah, doesn't matter, give him Mike, he's, he's bad in thousand nine.
He's happy to, he is.
I just wanna get out of here.
Be careful what you wish for, by the way. Now, um, so, uh, further no further comments, Ms. Maria, if you wanna call the roll?
Councilman Guthrie.
Aye.
Councilwoman Paul Harrison.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Wild.
Aye.
Mayor McDonald.
I love my blue votes, aye. Okay, very good, now, uh, what do we have now?
Dental.
Dental, discharge, wow. Feel notified, no coming up.
I, I read the dental.
And it's gonna be whatever Ms. Kim says, all right, so, Kim, go ahead.
So, basically, this is a change.
What, you got a title you need to read?
Okay, I'll read that.
All right.
Um, a change to our code that places new limits and reporting requirements on dental facilities and medical wasted charges to be in compliance with state and federal laws. We're required to incorporate this into our code as a part of our sewer agreement with Offmont Springs.
Oh, that's right, that's right. Before we have any questions or comments, we're gonna let Ms. Maria do what she is eager to do.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mayland, Florida, amending chapter twenty, article three, division one and three of the Mayland Code of Orders, to adopt and amend requirements for existing and new dental facility addressed, healthcare facilities in regards to disposition hazard choice, are suitable, to step forth regulations that exist, filling removal or replacement of dental, vacuum suction system, and to provide remedies against punitive discharges, providing for legislative finding, providing for conflict, providing for clarification, providing for self-probability, and providing for effective date.
All right, anybody from the public, you know, there's itch of the comment on this item, on this specific item? Hearing that, seeing that, now we'll bring it back to council, and, uh, anybody wants to make this motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion. Make a motion to adopt and oppose ordinance amending section twenty, article three, division one and three of the city code. How to read that with my glasses falling off.
Yeah, he's gone so far.
I'm in a second there.
All right. Man, good blood, just making it happen. All right, like, yeah, uh, all right, so we have a motion, a second, any further questions or comments? Ms. Maria, you're on.
Councilwoman Paul Harrison.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Wild.
Aye.
Councilman Guthrie.
Aye.
Mayor McDonald.
Four, five, over, six, seven, eight, isn't it? Aye, I'm sorry. Uh, now, let's, uh, the city manager, any old business, you wanna share with us?
Um, I will, I will save it for later, since we're, we've got a lot more to get through. I did wanna bring up one thing, um, Councilwoman Paul Harrison asked during the consent agenda, she just had a question, doesn't necessarily wanna pull it off. Are you okay with her just asking the question?
Always okay.
Okay, we just wanna make sure, for the interest of time, she can ask her question.
You do all again, don't let that happen again.
It'll, it'll be something that I do.
That's fine, that's fine. We spent twelve years with them, we can do this. Uh, she, she might have questions, too. Uh, now, uh, anybody have, uh, wanna respond, to, uh, remove any items from numbers two through five on the consent agenda, pull it down? Hearing that?
Could she, could she ask her question?
Oh, yeah, ask your question.
Oh, okay. Um, I would like to get a little bit more information about number three, which is the twenty twenty U.S. Department of Justice grant. Um...
That would be me.
Fantastic, thank you. Uh, my question is, what was the grant application for? What is being funded and paid for with the grant, and what is the intention of how the grant's gonna be used?
Uh, what we're doing, we're replacing our in-car long rifle system, uh, some of those weapons are fifteen to twenty years old. Um, and we have three different models that we use within the department, so we're trying to streamline that and make it all one weapon system. So we're just really trading out the old ones and gain a new weapon system, so, uh, every officer has the same handgun and same long gun.
All right, Rick, is that an address question?
That's great, thank you.
Thanks, Leslie, thank you, David, gee. No, I was just, I don't have the addresses. Uh, all right, so, given the question aside, motion to be in order. Make a question, approve, set agenda. Also happening again, second, we have a motion, a second, any further comment? Oh, do I need public period?
I do.
I do.
Oh, thank you. What did I have a last name? Um, thank you, so a motion, second, all right, we're good? Ms. Maria.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilman Wild.
Aye.
Councilman Guthrie.
Aye.
Councilwoman Paul Harrison.
Aye.
Mayor McDonald.
Aye.
Okay, this is our now-famous Mayland general public period. Anybody like, that would like to address, uh, any non-agenda item? Uh, this would be the time, uh, anybody that would like to address that, don't be bashful.
I would, if you don't mind.
One over here.
Yes, sir.
And if you would, share your name and address with us.
Certainly, uh, my name is Stephen Longski.
Wait till you get to the microphone, so we can record them, thank you, there you go.
My name is Stephen Longski, I'm a resident, nineteen fifty-five, came out of their circle, love Mayland, love this community, appreciate what you guys do for it. I wanna bring to your attention a concern that our neighborhood has, is the intersection of Thistle and, uh, Horatio. There are, uh, some real safety concerns that exist in that intersection, I don't know if it's a signage issue, or what is causing these concerns, but traffic that's heading north on Thistle, uh, coming up to the intersection, there are several instances where people driving their car think that the oncoming traffic lane is a left-hand turn lane. We have multiple photographs of evidence of this, what happens is it blocks uncome traffic that's trying to turn into the neighborhood, and it gets them blocked in a circumstance where the cross-traffic in Horatio is susceptible, pretty susceptible to being T-bone essential. Happened to my wife, uh, earlier last week, almost got T-boned with my four kids in the car, scared the crap out of me.
Oh, you need to break in, you have four kids.
Yeah, uh, but anyways, uh, I did bring this to attention to, uh, the city about a year and a half ago, uh, called, uh, the administrative offices, I can't remember the path that I took, I think I had to talk to someone, F D A, and multiple different organizations and entities, and it just kind of went nowhere. Uh, recently, we did contact, uh, some people in the neighborhood who had connections within the city. I'm just trying to create awareness of the problem, so that we can try to create solutions, so that no one gets hurt, uh, in the circumstances that count. If there's any need for photographs, evidence, I have probably about four photographs that demonstrate that I should avoid getting hurt.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
That's it, thank you.
You should, I live, uh, very close to, uh, Angela.
Oh, okay, excellent, yeah.
I know, so, I know the intersection extremely well.
So, we, we did get pictures.
Right.
I saw them today.
Oh, excellent, okay.
Um, all the works saw them today, and so, they're, they've been out there, uh, I, it's unfathomable why anyone would think that that's a lot. I drove by it on my way home on my way back, you know, she does.
Twice a day.
Yeah.
It's crazy, right? I, I agree.
I can go with a picture to all of you if you wanna see it, because it, it just confounding.
Orange County Road, Steve.
It, it's not, it's actually the Mayland side of the road, so they're actually, you know where Ivan's House was?
Yeah, I do, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so you've got that funky little turn-in, right? And then you've got a, ladies going across, going north, and then you just start turning in. They're pulling into the...
Yeah, if you...
But they're pulling across the double line, pulling up to the light, in the oncoming lane of traffic.
And it's, it's not even frequent enough where, not just one person.
You've got two pictures.
And I got a photograph texting me today from my next-door neighbor, with another example.
Everybody only takes one.
Yeah.
No, I can't imagine, you're trying to turn in, you'd be stuck in the middle of Horatio.
Yeah, terrible. I appreciate you, I just wanna bring it to everyone's attention, we can do something as a community, and if anything, could be helpful.
Thanks, Maria.
Appreciate it, thank you.
My son was very disappointed, your son, then, just in the car.
Yeah, I see, they're, okay, they're both. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Stacy Larson, the director of the Mayland Public Library, may I give you a thirty-second update, so I agree with Councilman Thomas, you don't like to go home eventually? Uh, the library is open for express services, that means you can come inside the building, get everything you need, get books, get movies, get audio books, we'll help you with your device. We are still doing curbside, we're gonna do curbside pickup pretty much forever, because it is a very well-received service. So if you've got kids, dogs, or disability issues, please stay in your car, bring you your stuff. And summer reading has kicked off, it's all virtual this year, so for kids and adults, everything is online, uh, you can come pick it up, you are reading at the library, you can download one from our website, keep an eye on our website and our Facebook page for all kinds of kids' videos for the summer reading program, there's still some cooking demos, online on our Facebook. So, thank you.
Roger that, thanks, Stacy.
We are too.
Uh, anyone else wanna address the, uh, council regarding a non-agenda item? Hearing that, we'll close, close the public period, and, uh, getting back to our, uh, decisions. Uh, am I in the right spot here? Yes, I am, all right, Ms., Ms. Maria, you wanna read the title?
In ordinance of the City of Mayland, Florida, amending the Mayland District Code of Orders, relating to creation of the downtown Mayland Zone and downtown Mayland Plant Development Zone District Regulations, providing for committed conditional prohibited uses within the downtown Mayland Zone and downtown Mayland Plant Development Zone District, providing for development standards within the downtown Mayland Zone and downtown Mayland Plant Development Zone District, providing for certain exceptions and waivers for the downtown Mayland Zone District Development Standards, providing for signage regulations and standards within the downtown Mayland Zone District, some provisions that will become moot upon open communication of the downtown Mayland Zone and downtown Mayland Plant Development Zone District, providing for separability costs, providing for conflict, and providing for effective date.
Pretty good at that. All right, Dan.
All right, council, so this, this item is the conversion of our land development code and zoning code, this is the first step in it, from the old code to the new code. So, as you recall, this is a bit about a year in the making thus far, the project started in July two thousand and eighteen with an ultimate end date in the five-step process of May, uh, two thousand and twenty-one. So, when we went to council back for a joint workshop, council, the innards, they asked staff to, and the consultants, to focus on the downtown area. They thought the downtown area was an area that they wanted to get done before the rest of the code, so they asked everyone, they asked the council, they asked, excuse me, the staff and the consultant to fast-track the downtown. So what this update accomplishes is it implements our comprehensive development plan, it provides for pedestrian skills signs, it protects single-family homes, it also incorporates architectural standards and sustainability standards. So, in starting this, we talked, the consultant was given a copy, as well as staff, we worked together, we looked at... We looked at the downtown Maitland revitalization plan. We, we looked at the Viper Master Plan, also the downtown master plan, the sustainability action plan, the existing land development code, and the comprehensive development plan. All of these were looked at by the consultants in putting together this document. Then they met with council, individual meetings with council, with P&amp;Z, and with staff, and joint workshops. And all of that, together, the consultants did a really good, really bang-up job, put this all together into a downtown code that implements all of these visions that have been adopted over the years by council. So what this ultimately comes out to is a downtown land development code for the downtown Maitland District, as well as the PD District. The goals of it, when, when the consultants were meeting with staff and P&amp;Z and council, the goals that came out of this were supporting a higher-density walkable mixed-use development, protecting the character of the existing residential neighborhood developments, enhancing architectural form and design standards, and strengthening the connections to get people in and out of downtown. How to get people to downtown and back safely using automobiles, pedestrians, and bicycles. And also, it updates some of our lighting standards and our off-street parking requirements, and encourages sustainable development practices. So, the project goals, as defined in that workshop, was to modernize that zoning and land development regulations, and looking at national best practices, make it more concise. We all know that those of us that have worked through this ordinance, it's, it's a little bit hard to find stuff at times, it jumps around. So, putting it all together in a more concise, effective manner, and easier to understand, much more user-friendly, and I think you'll find that as we go through this. During the analysis of the existing land development code, the consultants, right out the gate, said the existing code does not adequately support the ambitions, the development of its, of the city's future. So what this downtown code does, is it takes into consideration the existing, uh, use regulations, the intensity development standards, applicability waivers, building orientations and signs, but it also adds architectural standards, neighborhood compatibility standards, and I'll talk about all of these in a little bit more detail. Sustainability standards and some unique parking standards. So, in our current land development code, the DSD has a long list of permitted uses, like hearing, horses, manufacturing, things that we're not going to see in the downtown.
Prohibited uses.
Prohibited uses. But things that we're not going to see. It also refines the conditional uses, a lot of things like drivers were conditional uses. And it had a lot of outdated, non-existent uses, like video graphics scores. In a modern code, this new code, the LEC, in downtown Maitland, it, it uses either listed as permitted or conditional. If it's not listed, it's deemed prohibited, unless they, unless the applicant has a use that they write to the director and deem that it is so similar to one of the existing uses, that it, it has the same impact. It also reduces the permitted conditional uses, and it allows townhomes and livework units allowed by right, instead of by a PD only. So, the, the changes to reflect the comp plan policies, what this code does is it really looks at the comp plan and it implements what was adopted by council. And it simplifies with graphics and in displays, so, really easy to understand what we want as a city out of a developer. It gives a lot of drawings, a lot of graphics that say, here's how we want it to look, here's what we mean by site setback, here's what we mean by front garden, building lock line. And it provides real good descriptive of the architectural standards, outdoor dining areas, things like that. Puts new facade and architectural standards in downtown. It also puts the, uh, standards that were in place, the existing code that were good, it carried those forward. The ones that weren't good, or what weren't up to best management practices, those were rewritten, and some new standards were added as well. We also changed some of the design form standards, making the landscaping and lighting more user-friendly, but more consistent throughout, so you don't have a different type of street pole every street you turn down. We also incorporated in that more signage for downtown area, A-frame signs, as we build this downtown that's walkable, friendly, pedestrian-friendly downtown. What we didn't allow in the past was these A-frame signs that are really pedestrian-oriented signage for things like venue boards and stuff like that for restaurants. So it, it also simplifies and clarifies our sign standards. Our old sign standards were by the zone district, and it could change next door to next door. This one simplifies it, so it's easy to understand. It also provides some sustainable design standards, develop, sustainable development standards. So it implements council's commitment to the future generations by requiring a certain amount of points from different categories to reach that minimum required sustainability. It adds neighborhood compatibility standards that aren't in our existing codes, so these are new, these are based on emphasis of protecting those traditional neighborhoods, this traditional neighborhood future lane use district, from incompatible densities and intensities. It talks about orienting buildings away from the traditional neighborhood, reduction in massing, and distinct development standards, including fence walls and some operational standards. So if you recall in the comp plan, when council adopted the comp plan, they had a standard in there that talked about certain areas that there's a hundred-foot protection where it bucks the single-family, the traditional neighborhood, and then other areas between Mayway Avenue, Cebolla Parkway, and Maitland Ranch Canal Park Avenue, where there was a two-hundred-foot buffer. So what this does, is this adds these neighborhood compatibility standards. So in a case like this, where you have a two-hundred-foot buffer, you know that the, the heights of the traditional neighborhood, the first hundred feet of that develop, of that main street is going to be at the same height. The next fifty feet, they can go up ten feet, and then another five feet, and then it's not till they get two-hundred feet past the red, the single-family homes, that they can get up to the maximum eighty feet that's allowed in the main street. And this is where there's that two-hundred-foot buffer. Where there's a hundred-foot buffer, you have the thirty-five feet for the first hundred feet of depth, and then you go up ten feet, two-hundred fifty, and after two-hundred fifty is when you can get to your maximum. So, it also looks at density, so neighborhood compatibility is not just height, it's also density. So in a case where you have traditional neighborhood in a main street, in downtown Maitland, right now, as proposed, if you're under two acres in size, you can get up to twenty units per acre, over three acres, you can get up to forty units per acre. If you have the dice, if you're using the dice program, you can get forty-five to sixty-seven units per acre, depending on how many acres you're dealing with. If you're in the edge district, it goes down. So again, protecting the single-family neighborhoods in the edge district, the maximum you can get at over three acres is only forty-seven units per acre. Again, transitioning in height and intensity as you get closer to the single-family neighborhoods. This seemed to be very important when the consultants and staff were interviewing P&amp;Z and council, that protecting those neighborhoods were very important. So it also incorporates the downtown PDs. So the downtown PDs allows for a maximum density and intensity through the dice program. So all, all programs, all developments that are using the dice have to go through the PD process and a developer's agreement. That was what council adopted in the ordinance, it's carried forward into this code. It also encourages and allows innovative and efficient development concepts and building placements, and sets out concept plan contents, what's going to be required, and establishes that PD agreement, what, what we want to see in that developer's agreement. So in the current land development code, right now, the way it works is that if you develop under fifty percent of the value of your building, you don't have to follow any standards. If, if your improvement is fifty-one percent of the value, you have to go with all of the standards in the DMTC, unless you get council to waive them. This is very discouraging for reuse and redevelopment, and it actually penalizes somebody, and it encourages them to just cheapen out and just go under that fifty percent, so they don't have to follow any of the rules. So, it's a very all-or-noise approach to it. In the, in the new standards, in the downtown Ma- Maitland standards, it uses a percent as a change, of change. So if you're doing less than fifty percent of the floor area, over cumulative, over a five-year period, you still have to follow six of the standards. If you go over fifty percent, you have to follow eighteen of the standards. And if you're a tear-down and a re, redo project, then there's twenty-two complete standards that they have to follow. It does allow for dimensional waivers to twenty-five percent, granted by staff, and that's, that's usually a concentration of community development and public works. And then, if it's anything over twenty-five percent, it has to be, it has to go to P&amp;Z, the existing code is ten percent. So what these criteria mean is, again, in the DMTC, it's all or none. You either, under fifty percent, you do nothing, over fifty percent, you do all of them. In the new DM, zone district, under fifty percent, you have these six criteria here on the, on the left, the first six criteria. Over fifty percent, you add in the, the frontage, the pedestrian, the parking garage, require, or standards, small modern design. And a new, a new PD or a new complete tear-down and rebuild, you also throw in the mix the building orientation, the architectural standards, the, uh, service utility standards, sustainability, the neighborhood compatibility, site access, so a whole list of things, if you're a new PD or a tear-down and a rebuild. Existing PDs get to stay as they are, and they get to stay under their PD. The DM PD is only for new PDs or dice-related projects. So that, this code also provides new forward-thinking parking standards. So how it works is that the multifamily townhomes are still required one space per, per unit, and the non-residential uses are fifty percent of the standard outside of downtown. And what that does is it encourages a downtown that's walkable and bikeable. It trains the behavior that we don't want, if we want a walkable downtown, we don't, we can't give everybody their own parking spot, because that's going to encourage them to rent a car. This is based on national studies, it's based on plan, AP, a planning reports, uh, all sorts of studies out there that show that we're really overparked. But what the standard does here with this downtown is it says, that fifty percent is your maximum parking. You can give us more than the maximum, but if you give us more than maximum, it has to be open to down, to the public in downtown, and starts building an inventory of downtown parking spots that people can go and park. So, we're not saying you can't give us extra parking, we're saying you can do, it can't be exclusively your business, it's got, the access has to be open to the public. So it also establishes, I talked about, establishes the maximums, so it builds that parking inventory. So in February two thousand and twenty, P&amp;Z voted unanimously to forward the proposed ordinance to council, establishing the DM District, DM PD standards, with a recommendation of approval. They had twenty-eight comments and edits, and they incorporated staff's thirty-seven con- comments and edits. So, put that together, they, they didn't just look at it and pass it by, they had well over sixty comments and changes to the ordinance. That's before you tonight. In February nineteenth, two thousand and twenty, DRC voted unanimously to forward the proposed ordinance and that amendment to council with a recommendation of approval, incorporating all of P&amp;Z's comments and edits with, with two exceptions. One of them, P&amp;Z, uh, recommended that they strike IFAS as a building material, and DRC felt that that should remain as an option. Uh, the second one is that P&amp;Z recommended that they strike metal and steel walls as a prohibited building material, and DRC felt that we should remain keeping those prohibited. So with that, staff recommends council introduce the proposed amendments, establishing the downtown Maitland and downtown Maitland PD zoning districts, and set a public hearing and action date for June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I know there's someone here in the public that wishes to speak on it as well, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Dan, where are the P&amp;Z comments that were included? Did I, did I not see them along here?
The P&amp;Z comments are not in your packet, they're incorporated into the final document.
Do they have ones that DRC struck out?
True.
Did you hear?
They're incorporated into the packet. What, what everyone's looking at tonight is all, all of the comments. Uh, I, I actually, if you want to look at them, I can put them up on the screen.
So I have them available?
I, I do.
Washington is prepared, please. Not, not at all.
I was not aware of that at all.
Very prepared.
So...
Staff comments?
Yeah.
Go back a couple words.
So, P&amp;Z comments, and again, these pages aren't going to mean anything anymore, because they've all been incorporated. But, uh, there was comments about adding some work language to say sustainability into the introduction, explaining the sub-districts better, explaining...
This is all in...
This is, this is all...
They're incorporated into the document.
Do you want me to read all of them, or they're already in the document?
They're already rewritten, anyway. Yeah, document.
Yeah, I understand, I, I listen, I understand you're good, I just wanted to see if we'll put this through, remember.
I just didn't want you all reading them all.
Thank you. I'll let you know when you're ready for me to turn the page.
Okay. This was over about four and a half, eight hour B, as I recall, Dan?
Correct, so we, we, we met, well, we went over it page by page for about four, four hours plus, uh, in addition to the two-hour agreements we had.
Okay, we've been good.
Look, Dan, just to clarify, the two items on page thirty-two, which were P&amp;Z recommendations, they're not in here.
The two that, the DRC recommendations, correct.
Okay.
The, the IFAS and the metals are not included in the ordinance.
So all, all the comments goes in here, we do the...
Correct, okay.
Have you had a clear understanding of why DRC didn't like those two?
I...
You can clarify, right?
Because IFAS, IFAS is not a bad material. Uh, it's, we, we have it all over downtown, actually.
Oh, yeah.
Across the street, we have it up there, Walgreens has it. If done right, it's good, it allows flexibility, it allows more design. Now, I, I have seen articles that in a single-family use, it seems to be more problematic than in, in non-residential. But, uh, so that, that was one of the main reasons why DRC felt that way. The metal steel buildings, uh, we, we felt that it should still be prohibited, because we didn't think that we should have, uh, like, big storage height, metal, metal walls, metal buildings. It just didn't seem like the, the looking field that is appropriate to go with our architectural design guidelines for downtown.
So that the metal buildings, they were actually trying to, I, I thought they were trying to...
So, so this is, this is kind of the, what an IFAS is like, and it goes through the layers of what's in it. The metal buildings, here's kind of some of the things that we didn't feel should be in the look and feel of downtown.
It's funny that, it's, I thought of metal, like, I thought they were trying to allow for more modern...
Yeah, that's, that's what the words are all about.
Is that what you were talking about, right?
Yeah.
And you look at the portion dealership. Well, I see, I see both, so I see the interest of a, a not necessarily, I don't want to say encourage it, whatever, but not outlaw it. As far as like a modern metal-ish design versus this metal building, I get it. So I, I don't know if the two are being lumped together unfairly.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could look at limiting the percentage of a building that's allowing to use, to have metal.
I mean, I get the, I get not having the metal buildings, but I don't know if that's meant to capture a...
But that also...
...metallized building.
Well, right, so are we talking like with the facade, or it's actually what it's made of? Because I, I know what you're saying about if it's more industrial-looking, but it's also more modern-looking. But this would also prohibit us from having, like, a little container park too, right? Like, if somebody wanted to come in and put up, you know, a bunch of those little containers into what they found down in Nona, or I've seen it in other cities, we couldn't do that either, because of the metal.
Yeah, the IFAS.
Yeah, in the downtown Maitland, if council chooses to this statement, council could absolutely say, no, we, we still want the metal, or we don't want IFAS.
No, I get this.
Yeah.
I just don't know, like I said, I don't know if you're, I, I don't know what the P&amp;Z comment was, were they trying to...
Yeah, I think...
Were they trying to allow this, or were you trying to allow a more modern? We're, we're looking at more of a more modern, you know, style, because there's a lot of things out there that you can do right now, you know? Especially your facade and, or a first story, um, you know, enhancement or something to your building. Uh, I think, you know, we use the portion dealership down there as kind of a example. So, is that considered metal, would you consider that a metal building, man?
I, I think if we limit the amount of metal, so we don't have a warehouse look, or a high-low deep open or down there.
Yeah, this isn't like, if you disagree, but I get, I get the, I get the concern, so I'm not trying to, if it's...
It, it wasn't something that, that we're, we were hugely, we just felt, when we pictured... metal with steel, because it wasn't, it wasn't listed as a percentage, it was kind of, do you want metal or not? In our minds, we, we look at a metal shell like an airport hangar type building.
I mean, I'm good with, if the, if, if you don't feel like you can regulate metal steel buildings to include this, then I'm good with the no metal or steel buildings. If you think you can come up with some kind of language that says, we don't want this, but we'd be okay with a modern style architecture, then I'd say both are that.
We, we can look at some language that limits the percentage or the amount of, I, I think we can come up with something if that's not what's designed to allow metal and steel.
But I don't care, I, I'm not. Yeah, I think that's what they were, we were shooting for on the thing is. I think that'd be good.
I can put a amount of words on my house, there are no real fun buildings.
Yeah, and that EFS, you know, I said to everybody, did everybody see the video I sent out today? I mean, that is, I mean, it was, there's videos of this, of this product that flopped all over YouTube and one guy who, he was really upset, he had a little hand hatchet, went to his house and in twenty seconds, he cut through to his living room through the EFS. It, it got moldy and had water damage and, you know, I just don't think it's a good prod, uh, product myself. I mean, it's just stuck though, right? So.
It's a little bit more than that, it's a separate, it's a multi-layered, moisture barriers and hard siding and the frame and, so it's a little bit more to that. And again, if you've done right and installed correctly, it can be nice. The stuff that I researched after watching your video on the internet seemed to be, the problems seemed to be with the residential, not with the non-residential. There's several articles that said, as a realtor, we recommend it not for residential bookworm, but that, of course, seemed to be able to do it right. And again, we have it several places downtown now, we haven't heard any, any issues with it downtown.
So I think there's a higher quality construction and better maintenance?
And then the non-metal. Yeah, it, yeah, it's, I mean, like I said, if it's done right, it, it can be good, but again, it's not a.
I'd like to commend the DMZ and the staff for working the midnight order on it.
Watch, go ahead, Dan, any more you want to offer? I have struggled a little bit as you do, it's kind of like.
Well, I just.
I'm not quite, no doubt, I think staff has done a great job in particularly breaking the inertia to do something that hasn't been done in forty-nine years. We haven't done this since nineteen seventy-one, it's about time. And we found ourselves, uh, and with self-imposed, granted self-imposed council deadline to have this ready to submit to prior to a couple of outgoing city council members leaving and having the opportunity to vote, that unfortunately doesn't exist anymore. Uh, again, I'm a, I'm a big fan of the best and brightest from a defined local planning agency standpoint. Matt Lamb, people sit on planning, zoning are best and brightest, this is what they do, this is what they know best. Again, I, I'm not a fan of one-on-one meetings, a one synergistic city council meeting that went for four and a half hours, when there were council, there were P and Z commission members that hadn't seen this document at all, et cetera, a few days in advance. Uh, I still don't have, maybe I'm just an idiot, I will be, I may be, uh, I'm still not seeing in my, in my packet here, the sustainability story model, okay? I did not realize that sustainability has now become a negotiable element of dice. I'm never going to get knocked out by that. So, uh, I have lots of issues and if, if I had my way, I would send this back to P and Z right away for a thorough review. Uh, uh, you know, again, we got four really smart people sitting there right now that I believe would love to have a little shot at it. And I, so again, without me saying any more than necessary, I don't see us being in a hurry that.
Let me ask something, so this is, this is one, one element of a bigger package, it's going to come back in May of next year. So between now and May of next year, will this downtown section be further evaluated and looked at and, and, and be further input into it?
Absolutely, this is not the last time you're going to see it. As we do the rest of the code, there are going to be tweaks that we have to make to the downtown because consistency standpoint, and to make it all work, so, and, and that's why P and Z was unanimous to pass it forward because they, they knew they were going to see it again, they knew they were going to see it as a big picture item. It, it, and again, I, I, if, if we, and I understand your concern, we talked about this earlier today, if, if staff level conservative, if we send it back to P and Z, we're going to be pulling staff resources off of moving the big picture ahead to come back and do that. And I think it's ready, it's, it's a really good fix and I, and I intend that we're better off with it even as a Band-Aid than we are without it going with the DMZD right now.
Let me, let me ask this, if there was a project came forward three months from now, we had this in place versus what we have now in place, they would have, they would go by what's now in place?
They would go by the DM.
So they would go by this, they would go by what everybody agrees is.
Well, we're not going to have this in place pretty much. If, if council adopts this June twenty-second, anything after June twenty-second would be.
Yeah, Becky's going to come tell us exactly what our interpretation and what it says.
So, so what, what I'm saying is, what, what I'm saying is that, you know, this isn't perfect and, and, you know, it, it, it's pretty good, it's definitely a lot better than what's in place now. So if, if we get this in now, on June twenty-third, so any project coming before us would have to adhere to something that's at least a lot better than that, what they would have to adhere to if this wasn't passed. So this puts that Band-Aid on there and in the meantime, they're coming, you know, this is going to be, continue to be evaluated for, for, uh, for the, until May of next year and, you know, your input and, and our, and our issues and back through P and Z. So, so I, I don't see a, a downside to doing this or, or holding it up in the process for, for several more months and then risk having a, a project come through and we're kind of stuck with a, a code that we all admit is, is, is terrible.
Oh, it is, I agree.
So, you know, thi- this will, this will, this will be a lot better if somebody comes and wants to do something downtown, will be a lot better to have this in place than what's currently in place and then we get another couple bites at the apple before May. So I'm not disagreeing with you that, that, that there should be things that can be included in this, but it, it's a heck of a lot better than what we got now and it won't hurt to have them in place in case a big project comes through, which we did have it in place. So that would be.
I think that would be like for those of you, uh, the Lindsay, I mean, Vance is very familiar with this, you haven't actually seen this played before. Uh, a, an esteemed local development attorney that we all know and love here is going to one day come up here and speak on behalf of an applicant, kind of this work ethic. And so, and she's going to choose to interpret and she's very good at it, okay? She's going to choose to interpret what we, what our code says. And at some point in time, we're going to look back on June of twenty and say, you know, it's better than what it was. After forty-nine years, we're settling for, it's better than what it was.
But you're not, you're not listening to what I'm saying there, I, we're, we're getting another bite at this apple, we're, we're going to have, we're going to approve the whole mother lode in, in May or May of next year, so.
Right.
So this is a temporary stopgap, it's, it's much better than what we have now, that will be in place until we get the whole, the whole city under this new code. So, you know, that, that's all I'm saying, I'm not saying this is going to be the permanent system we're going to be working on, it's flaws, I'm saying if this has, you know, ten flaws, then what we have now has a hundred flaws. If somebody comes with a project, I'd rather have Becky interpreting this than what we currently have, so.
But you know what, we, and what the mayor's talking about, both the other right, I believe, but you know where it stems from is that this was rushed, this was rushed and then after it was rushed, it got nowhere, it stalled out and sat and sat and sat. So because a couple of council members who are a member at our workshop, there was even a comment of, we better get this through now before the new people come in, I think was the comment, rushed to get this through, planning and zoning didn't even really get to read this. I think we got it on, you know, a week beforehand, I don't think one person was able to go through the whole thing. I know I was out of town, I came back on Monday, I think we had a meeting Tuesday or Wednesday.
Thursday.
And Wednesday, and then I was told, hey, listen, and, and nothing against you, Dan, I mean, this isn't about you. And I was told, listen, don't worry about it, we still got to do the map, we can push this off and do the map. And that wasn't true, we had to get it done, we were told one time, you got to get this done, we don't want to bring it back to planning and zoning. So we've, we've done it to ourselves and I think that's a disservice, it was a disservice to planning and zoning, it's a disservice to the citizens and, um, yeah, you can tell quite motion that I'm pretty upset how this all went down, that's all I've got to say.
All right, Lindsay, thoughts? Now, what we're being asked to do is for public.
Give me an EFS or a MAF.
What we're being asked now is to push it forward for a second hearing, Dan?
Yeah, this is just to introduce it until June twenty-second.
So.
If we got, and we got public here that wants to speak, we've got Amber, P and Z that, that is here.
I'd rather, yeah.
I'll offer.
Okay, very good. Uh, if my public like to address this item, consider me. Beck, go ahead.
I don't know if I want to get in the middle of this one, but my name is Rebecca Wilson. I'm with two fifteen, I'm at two fifteen North Yola Drive, um, here on behalf of the owners of Peacock Ford. And, and I definitely agree with the, the sentiment of both staff and the council and that is that the, the current DMZD is unwieldy, incredibly difficult to understand.
You're the clinic again, aren't you?
It, it would maybe good for keeping Landy's lawyers in business, but maybe not, not great for, for other things. Um, I just wanted to bring one thing, I, I have a, a letter that, um, is put into the record, but, um, you all are familiar with Peacock Ford, it was previously Don Reed Ford. It has been in the city of Maitland, or at least half of it was in Maitland, half of it was in unincorporated Orange County, since I believe the late nineteen fifties, early nineteen sixties.
Nineteen fifty-seven.
And in, um, in twenty twelve, uh, the city of Maitland asked, uh, the Reeds at the time to annex the rest of theirs, the rest of the property into the city of Maitland instead of leaving it in unincorporated Orange County, uh, with a general agreement that we all understood that it was a car dealership and will continue to be a car dealership. Um, it was purchased a few years ago, um, by Peacock Ford and the, the zoning, if you can understand the DMZD zoning and, and Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, but automobile sales were a conditional use in the, we were in the Packwood District, so it was anything south of the railroad crossing. And in the, the new DM zoning and, and what we're going to be re-zoned to that's proposed tonight, um, those car dealerships are no longer a permitted use nor are they a conditional use. Um, instead, you would have to, my understanding, again, Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, you have to come in as a planned development. So our concern is that, um, there was this use that was allowed when we purchased our property, I understand it could continue as a grandfathered use, but that's very different from being a use that could be completely demolished that for some reason, I think I used an example, they wanted to be an Audi dealership and then tear out a Ford dealership under the, the proposed zoning, that would not be allowed. And so that's our concern and if there, I know this is going to a second hearing, if there's just some time, um, between now and then, I'd like to work that out with, um, Mr. Shepherd and his staff, um, and a- along with Dan, either to add something to the code, um, or to, to give us some type of, of agreement that makes sense.
Thanks, Beck.
Thanks, Ben.
My only questions of Ms. Wilson while we have them. You don't get that pretty very often?
Great. Matt Lamb, ten seventy, Mohammed Trail, Ben in Thornton. I am a current member of Planning and Zoning, been a member since November, uh, not very long, but this is one of the first items, uh, obviously at the February board meeting, whenever we are, February, P and Z, we might have, we, we put this up. And so, um, you know, what, what I'll say is that I, I also want to commend him and his staff as well as the consultants in doing an excellent job, uh, in the advancement of this downtown component of the Land Development Code. Um, I think, as I understand, as they were directed, uh, by council and a unanimous vote to advance this, which they did, uh, and went through, um, extraneous efforts to make that happen, um, I will say that while we did get this, uh, in close proximity to the meeting time, we did spend an extra amount of time, uh, going through this page by page, line by line, comment by comment. Uh, they provided the staff's comments to us, we reviewed not only those staff comments, but we went through this document, provided our own comments, we were able to talk through everything. And while, you know, it was a long meeting, I personally don't feel, uh, that we were necessarily rushed in making this happen. I do admit that it's been a long time since this has happened, so I can appreciate, you know, the significance of how long the old municipal code's been in place versus this being changed. Um, but I will also add that our decision to move forward with this, um, as a decision to come to council, uh, for their decision was unanimous decision as well, as Dan made reference to. Uh, and so for that, I feel that I would strongly recommend and would like to recommend that council does actually approve this for, for a hearing. I think, as Dan mentioned, I think as, uh, several council members mentioned here this evening, uh, that there is, given, given the, you know, unique situation where we did get direction from council to advance the land of, uh, the downtown portion, a little bit unique, right? And that we, we broke that out, but I think in hindsight, it's actually kind of playing out pretty well in all of our favor. We can kind of get the best of both worlds, we've got this done, we can kind of put this in place while we work through the rest of the Land Development Code over the next, roughly the next year, um, we've got the ability to make any further adjustments, see if and when somebody does come in, we can kind of use this as some test case scenarios and make adjustments if we feel necessary, so that's my, uh, my request.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions from that? Some firsthand experience, thank you, Ben. Anyone else like to address the council?
Just, Matt, so you, you have a pretty good understanding of what's in this, in this document.
You know, this is my, this is my third meeting. Sorry. So, you know, I'm not going to say that I'm definitely not a Land Development Code expert, but what I will say is that we were given, you know, we were given the time to go through this line by line and, and, and comment by comment. And, and I feel, I feel very strongly that if I were to give this another shot, uh, you know, I mean, look, you can go through anything and kind of have, have second comments, but I feel like, uh, that we, that we went through this very, very thoroughly.
Hey, anyone else like to adj, uh, to address this specific, and the item stays, it's up to you then. No, okay, never mind. All right, we'll close up the period and, uh, unless there are other comments, a motion being ordered.
So I, uh, no, no, I, uh, the way I remember the history, this just from a timing standpoint is, and I, obviously, we, we had no idea that, and obviously, this wasn't about any new council person per se.
We had no idea, when, when, when this went down, we had no idea who was gonna be on council and what, what was gonna play out. So there was clearly nothing about trying to rush this to avoid or, or to have, to include certain input. I believe that this was done, I think when this came out, when we started talking about redoing land development code, the consultants came in and they put together a timeframe, and they charted out how long this was gonna take. And I remember thinking, wow, that's a long time to get through the land development code process. And I thought, wow, I mean, can't we do certain elements of it faster? Should it really take that long to get through this process? And I was explaining how complicated it was and how it takes this level of input. They had to meet with us individually, and to go, like I'm like, don't even say it. Collectively, and at the time, fans, we were looking at the fact that what would be the most sensitive area, given our history of development over the last five to ten years? What would be the area that would be the most sensitive to having a development project come in and we wouldn't want to feel like we were caught flat-footed and dealing with a land development code? What would be the most, what is the area that we're most sensitive?
Well, we've been talking about that since you were on planning and zoning. And, uh, planning and zoning, I mean, that's always been a conversation.
Overwhelmingly, it was, hey, we gotta look at the DMZD and say, what, your downtown, and how can we fix that? What are the areas? So consultant, move that up. So it wasn't, it wasn't solely about timing of council people coming on. It was also getting that done so that if a development project were to come in, we were dealing with a new code that was hopefully improved on the old code that addressed some of the deficiencies in the existing code. That was the, that was part of the, of the thinking. It wasn't just...
Right, I'm not gonna sit here and argue about it, you know, if it was pushed in or this or that. But I'm just telling you what I remember hearing at, you know, um, our workshop. And we got, I, I got this for three days. So I think that's where I'm gonna end this because, you know, we need to focus on this and not argue how, how, how fast or slow it's going. But I just feel like in the future, and I think Mr. Land even said this himself, planning and zoning, I mean, we need to get these earlier than just a few days, so we have more time to study. So that's all I'm saying. We need to focus on getting this done tomorrow.
Again, tonight, we're asking, being asked to advance this.
Yeah, I'm trying to actually get to productivity. I mean, I, I get that Dan's very passionate about the subject.
He always should.
It's definitely showing through, because I think we're missing potentially what I'm trying to say, which was that the point is that this is something that we probably, we were trying to improve on a DMZD issue because that is the, that is the, the one that I think was raising some of the most important concerns. But I think what you have to ask yourself is, and I think what Dan is trying to ask us as to moving it forward now versus kicking it back through a planning and zoning process, when we have a member of planning and zoning actually saying, hey, we think we've covered it, is, are we better off with this? If a project were to come in tomorrow, which I get in this world, the likelihood of that is probably smaller. But if a project were to come in, are we better off with this being adopted, knowing that we want to improve upon it versus not? To me, that's the question you, you have to ask. And I think what we're being told by our staff is you're in a better place adopting this and looking at it again in the future. I get the sensitivity to this, that you felt like, you feel like it was rushed through planning and zoning. And so I think that that makes the need to see this potentially scrutinized further when we go through the larger adoption. But what's the benefit of just saying, "I didn't like it, so even though we're better off adopting it, I still say let's put it off, and even though we'd be better off with it now," what's the logic there of saying, "Even though I know it's better than what we've got, I still think we should delay it and put more time on the books on it, even though we know we're gonna do that?" And I think if the issue is that you felt rushed, I think that let's look at that as far as how we make that process better. We, we, we have talked about, we have talked about gaining materials further in advance. We've talked about some middles further in advance. We've talked about that for, for, I mean, literally.
And we codified some of this.
We have, and we, and we have actually made improvements on that as we go. And so I think that, I mean, we were, we, we've talked about, and in fact, we've talked about how we don't want to, we don't want to be drafting development agreements on days.
On the gap year.
That's just not something we want to, right? So I completely get that point. But I think, again, there was, there was issues about just rushing. It wasn't really about rushing a vote to rush a vote. It was saying, where can we put ourselves in the best position as a city to react to a development that would come in? Because there was a concern that if we didn't do something, it was kind of the thought process of land development codes. It was, I mean, of the, uh, future land use, the comp land. It was saying, if we don't get something done, are we doing ourselves a disservice because we have essentially ignored a problem that we know was there? And we just let a whole bunch of development projects come in while we were consulting with consultants? And so, and so I think that, I hear you, and I hear the passion. I think that's fantastic, by the way, because we need passion in order to make, you know, good decisions. But I don't know that the passion is placed in the right ways to say, just don't, let's not do it because we wanna...
And that's kind of where I'm at with this, is we're just saying, and my statement is, this doesn't need to go on in the future. We need to, you know, give it time. I mean, we've been talking about this for years since Dan's been on about changing this and getting things right. I mean, how many times have we sat here on planning and zoning and said, "God, this is just miserable now, this DMZD," you know? Because you had this here, this here, and everything was so different. And, I mean, we've been talking about that for years or so. I mean, and then to get this for seven days, I mean, for a couple of days. I think just in the future, and that's my point, just, let's just give it to them with enough time in the future.
Yeah, and I think that had, had planning and zoning come back and resolutely said, "This was a rush job, give it back to us," I think I'd probably feel differently as well, but I haven't heard that. I haven't heard that as being consensus from planning and zoning. I think that there are often times, by the way, when we were on planning and zoning, where we felt like we were rushed, and an advocate just said, "I don't care what you say." Because I just want to get to a council vote. And that's the sensitivity that for all of us who serve on the advisory board. You never not feel marginalized from a, from a, from a advisory board standpoint that the city council isn't. So that's, I completely agree with that concept, that you want to make sure you're planning and zoning and all your advisory boards feel like their voice is being listened to on, uh, to the council, you know? But that's not the case here, because we had a five-oh vote, was a five-oh vote to carry this through. You had thirty, whatever it was, comments from planning and zoning, only two of which were objected to by staff. So I don't think this was a planning and zoning report that went unrecognized. This was a, but your point is well taken in that, hey, let's, let's make sure that we are gaining materials to the boards and to city councils far in advance that we can see these things. So, I mean, my, my preference would be to say, let's move this along. We went through the ad break, this is also the thing that, for me, I said, we tasked our staff and, and, and the consultant to move this on fast. And I actually thought we were gonna see this the end of twenty nineteen in some, in some version. I think we thought, hey, we're gonna get this going. We met with the consultants, I think it was, what, June or July last year, was it?
Yeah, it was July.
Yeah. That we actually met with these consultants. So I actually thought we'd be hearing it now. Granted, I know we lost two months, and I think we all still think it's March. But I'm still waiting for my kids to come back from break to school, but that's not gonna happen, so.
Summer break, no?
Yeah, we're already, yeah, summer break, yeah, summer break. But I, so I think that the idea is this can be a work in progress. I think we've asked the consultants and staff to move this along faster. Now, whether or not that was a good decision or a bad decision, I think we can look back at that and say, we shouldn't have obligated the process, we should have done this all at once. But I think there was thinking at that workshop to say, wow, this, this takes a long, I can't believe it takes this long. Let's hope that we don't get a slew of projects that come in from downtown. And, and again, it didn't happen. Uh, but, but I think that if we were to say, if this was worse, if, if Dan said, you know what? We rushed this, this is a terrible process. And planning and zoning said, "Way to go, council, you rushed this, you really messed up. We got an imperfect product. Let's just live with what we got," and fine. But I don't think that's what we're hearing. I think what we're hearing is this is better than what we've got. Let's adopt it, let's move on to looking at the whole code, and at the same time, focusing on what's wrong with this part. And I think that, Dan, you heard me say move on, shook your head because you think that by moving on from this, I mean that you don't touch again. I don't think that's what I'm saying. I think, I'm saying you keep working on it while you adopted it and allowed yourself to have a better code than what you've got. Now, if I'm wrong on that, I mean, if you disagree, Dan, that we think we keep what's there, then...
Oh, I have some sensitive concerns, but go ahead.
No, no, I mean, that's just my, I mean, I, and I think we can deal with it. We have concerns. Now, if what you say is, here are my concerns, let's attack this. Or if you think that you don't have enough time before the June, what is it? I hear you.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second, sorry.
Yeah, it's a hundred and four pages, is what I'm counting here, including maps.
Then I think what we do is we, if we can't deal with it at June twenty-second, then we either continue that portion of the discussion or we, we move it at that time. If we feel like we can't get through it on the June twenty-second, if their concerns are that between now and June twenty-second, we can't get the input in, or if you think that the planning and zoning needs to have...
A little funnier. Are we all looking at the preview draft or review draft November eighteen? What's it say on the front? Is that the right one, Dan? It should say public review draft November two thousand nineteen?
I have it unpacked, so I don't have to make the... I don't have the city name for land development.
I also think that what we should be...
Should it say update yet? Did it say update right there?
I got the update, but that's the old one, I think.
It should say February twenty twenty on it.
All right, I've got an old document, so, uh...
You gave us the update.
So, so we gave you the, we gave you a document back in November that was just getting through PNC because we were on time schedule. We gave it to you, the intent was to have it adopted by the second meeting in April. That was the direction we were given. We pulled all our resources, the consultant pulled their resources, and we got it done in time. As right as COVID, then we started canceling meetings. We gave you the version that was just past PNC and DRC, so you would have at least a month or more to review it before we started briefing and got, got to the public hearing.
Which never happened.
Which never happened. So, so you had it for a couple of months. The, the twenty twenty version that I have is just a different cover, but the text has not changed since the DRC recommended.
Mine has nothing regarding sustainability standards relative to DICE. So I'm looking at her whole document.
Sustainability?
I didn't hear Dan can.
Are you, are you looking in the PD section or are you looking at their regular?
Looking in the hundred and four page section.
You got the original one, Dan. You have the update. Yeah, so, so the, the DICE is in the PD section of the code, because DICE is only through PD. And what it talks about in section twenty-one, twenty-five, two B, it basically calls out DICE and it says exactly what the ordinance was adopted.
What's in Oregon, Dan?
Twenty-one, two-five, B.
Twenty-one, two-five, yeah, two dash B.
I've seen this referred to at the PNC meeting, these pic, the pictures here. I just don't have a copy of that, so I've been busy marking up this hundred and four page section, uh, for several months. All right.
This page has a lot of...
Twenty-one?
Aye.
Any sustainability action report that you refer to?
There are...
I actually see that document.
Oh, it's on page forty, sustainability action report?
Yeah.
The sustainability action plan you all adopted by, in November? Yeah, November, I think, brought that. You, you all adopted that?
And that was applied to the land development code?
Yeah, there were just items in there that said...
That we take them shows and put it in the land development code?
No, it, it said, as it relates to the land development code, we should implement sustainability practices. It's not...
And that became a scoring model, but then prospective developers might choose to disobey with or go gassberry one or five, but they don't participate. So anyway, that's again showing my bias.
But, I mean, those are the points that I think that you would be discussing. When you set the public hearing date, and if you don't get through them, you continue it. Um, then obviously, once you've advertised it, you don't have to re-advertise it. So you set the date, that we get you the right book if you don't have the right book. Dan's offered to do briefings with anyone who wants to sit down and, your particular questions like, where is this sustainability and what section is in it? He can work, work through the document with you. I know you're more than willing to do that. And if you still aren't ready on the twenty-second, you continue it to July. If you're not ready in July, you continue it, you know, to August. But at least you're working for those issues that you might have concerns about, that you, you didn't have to go to front.
I give that, uh, any other comments here, sort of enter, enter fan motion.
Your honor, to introduce the proposed ordinance, amending the Main Street City Code ordinance relating to the creation of the downtown Maitland and downtown Maitland Land Development Zoning District Regulations, and set the public hearing and action date for June twenty-second, twenty twenty.
Looking for a second?
A little second.
Yeah, motion, second. Any further comment? All right, Mr. Ray, you would...
Councilwoman Wild?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dudley?
I, I totally get it, man. Um, we're just passing along the twenty-second. Okay, aye.
Councilwoman Paul Harrison?
Aye.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
All right. Now, on the accompanying edition, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Maria?
In accordance with the city of Maitland, Florida, amended the official zoning map of the city of Maitland by amending the zoning district boundaries and changing the zoning map classifications of properties for those properties. Second, those zone plan development which are designated on the future land use map of the comprehensive development plan twenty thirty-five at Main Street, from C two, general commercial district, P dash one, professional office, P O two, professional office, CC cultural corridor, R S D one, residential single, single family duplex, R S E two, R, R S D one, sorry, and R G one, R S two, and DMZD to DM, repealing all conflicting ordinance design...
Easy, please, sir.
...from building cost and provide for an effective rate.
Didn't shoot that. All right, uh, thank you, Mr. Maria. Dan?
Chairwoman. So, yes, sir. So this is basically just the map amendment that creates the downtown Maitland district. What it, what it ultimately does is it follows the boundaries of the Main Street Future Land Use District that council adopted as part of the comp plan. It takes the current zoning designation, which is almost entirely DMZD. Most of the area is DMZD. There's a couple of pieces that are professional office over here and a couple of pieces down here that are a mixture of some small single families, some duplex units, and, and some small areas like that, also the cultural corridor. It takes all of those and converts that into the DM district, thus allowing us to completely remove the DMZD from the ordinance altogether. There is one outstanding parcel that you will get as your first reading on the twenty-second. There's a orphan parcel up here that was a split parcel. It was half RS two, half DMZD that was outside of the Main Street.
This is our, our storm light line.
Correct. And, uh, at the last meeting, PNC recommended and convert that to the, uh, convert that to the RS two. So ultimately, the city properties, in, in the bigger picture fix of the overall ordinance, the properties owned by the city are gonna go to a zoning district... the properties owned by the city are going to go to a zoning district that's proposed called the GAP, Government Arts and Public. So that's anything that's government-owned, leased property. So in the case where the, the orphan piece that's coming to you, it's going to be mandated to the RS two. So we can eliminate the DNCD all out altogether from the ordinance. And then when the rest comes in, it'll be GAP. And so with that being said, on, uh, February nineteenth, DRC unanimously recommended moving this forward to council with a recommendation of approval. PNC on March fifth voted three to two to forward the ordinance amending the zoning district to DM as proposed with a recommendation of approval, finding that the amendment is consistent with the comprehensive planning. So with that stat, we recommend council introduce the petition, twenty, twenty oh three. Ordinance setting the boundaries, change those boundaries from those districts to the DM and set the public hearing and action date for June twenty second, two thousand twenty. Dan, we have a answer. Any questions?
Now, eventually, I'm going to support moving forward. Yeah. But we are, uh, including nonprofit owned real property here that has not given that entitlement. Even what was DNCD before. By naming the civic center of the property.
Correct, it would go to the DM district.
Yeah. And for the benefit of nonprofits like me that already heard your explanation, might explain what impact of any that might have on a parcel that otherwise has no need for such designation.
It, it would have no impact if it doesn't have today when we have to do it. The same type of uses, it'd be...
But if it's in the DNCD right now?
The, what is, sorry, the Main Street. So if you would follow the Main Street, the property itself has some deed restrictions to it that kind of limited to...
Oh, great.
...what it is today, so it wouldn't affect it in, in any manner at all. And again, it...
But you feel like those deed restrictions would supersede the land use designations that would be, we would be administratively assigning to it?
Correct. Why do it though?
From your mouth to God's ears, damn man.
Why do?
Why put it in the DNCD?
Uh, because it's in the Main Street Future Land Use and the DM is, right now, it's in the cultural corridor district, I believe. And we're going to get it into the cultural corridor district altogether. And creating those into DM zoning for, with the bigger picture, if we're going to, the rest of the parcels are going to go to either GAP that are outside the Main Street Future Land Use, it's going to go to GAP or residential mixed use.
So why not put it in GAP?
Uh, because GAP isn't created yet. GAP won't be created until May of next year. So if we don't touch it, it's going to be cultural corridor, which is going away as well. And we'll have one piece of cultural corridor in that type of city.
But if it doesn't really fit, doesn't really fit DNCD?
It, it fits within the DM, the DM would allow all the, or DM, the DM would allow uses like cultural centers, civic centers, libraries, parks, things like that. If, if the city would require that piece, then it would go to GAP.
I don't know about that one. I can see where there could be some confusion. But I hear what you're saying. And the other comments, the questions that anybody has with Dan Lindsay, I have a summary for them.
Luckily, I have been talking to Dan directly, so he's, he's schooling me.
Mike, you have any questions?
Uh, let me ask you.
Yeah, go ahead.
The interest there of moving the, so it's, I know you've got lots of comments, maybe to the, to the map even. The thought about not saying what some of those comments are now versus...
I love you guys too much to do all that. Dan, well, again, uh, just for a point of clarification. The things, uh, the zoning designations that Maria so jointly handled for us. Uh, you might be able to point out where C two is. A good example of where a CO two spot was, where a, you know, other, uh, or, yeah, C two, P O one, P O two. So we could actually have to understand where those are.
So can you see that as a pointer?
Yeah.
Okay, so these are the PO business up here, there's only two or three parcels that are PO. Uh, again, the DM would allow them professional office type uses. These are the cultural corridor pieces here, that would change. All these are cultural corridor pieces. These down here are the RSD and RSD one and RS two parcels. Uh, again, when council did the future land use map, they drew the line right down here to make it even. You know, we looked at this as if, if we were to do just a DNCD to DM switch, you would have a DM land use, or excuse me, zoning that would have a very jagged parcel, kind of a odd shape. So when we, when the comp plan was adopted, they went right down the road, made it an even transition, knowing that it's approaching a little bit more into that area, but the, the, the two hundred foot buffer in the neighborhood compatibility standards that are part of that downtown Mainland zoning district accommodate that and it protects those residents over there. So that's, that's where those areas are down there.
The question areas, not the question areas.
Well, I would look, I mean, I, so just real quickly on the map. I, I do think, when I look at the, and I'm all up for straight lines. And I get that. My, my issue is that by doing what we did with the piece on the other side of Mainland Avenue, we created a jagged line. So you squared off lines in some efforts, but then created a jagged line on another effort. I think we're, we're, you know, trying to solve, solve problems. I get why you did it, but by solving one problem, you kind of, you kind of run against your own straight line policy. So I don't know if there's something you can do there with that part, that parcel on the other side of Mainland Avenue. I just, there is something to be said with that, with not doing a whole lot with that parcel, for giving the sense of nature of that.
So there's two options. I mean, one of them is we can just come down here with the DM district and just make that a straight line, knowing that that's going to go to GAP when it, when the bigger picture comes in.
Now, I don't, I don't, I don't know that having anything on the west side of Mainland Avenue makes sense to me personally.
To be in the DNCD?
DM.
Yeah.
I keep on, oh. I don't know that anything on the west side of Mainland Avenue is... I mean, if you look up and down Mainland, we don't do it anywhere else.
Well, there's DNCD here.
Well, I, I should say on, um...
The west side of Mainland Avenue?
Yeah, the west side of Mainland Avenue.
Right.
Anyway.
All right, I've got it down over here.
I mean, if I look up and down, unless I'm reading it wrong, Mainland Avenue is your, is pretty much the line you drawn for the outline of the DM.
Correct.
Or...
Right, yeah, this is Mainland Avenue right there.
So why go across Mainland Avenue and have one spot?
In this one here? Because it was consistent with the, the Main Street and that, that's why we tried to make it as consistent with the Main Street as possible.
Okay, we're, we're putting a, we're putting an entitlement on it that we know will never gonna bite us. I, I don't know, I don't, I hear, I, 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 look, I'm not disagreeing with your intent. I'm just saying, is there something there that we really, we want to touch on that one? And also, I think there is something to be said with the, with the straight lines and boundaries. Because I buy, I believe that, I bought into that kind of theory. Uh, because it, I mean, it was, I think, I was one of, I don't know if I was the only, but when we, when we did this before, I kind of brought up the, the step back approaches and expanding the protections along the Versailles neighborhoods, like, for example, the neighborhoods that were at once right up next to a DNCD zoning district, they could have given heights that were higher than what probably would be, higher than desirable, having that step back approach. So I, I get what you did and I appreciate all of that. I just don't know if that makes sense where, where, where that line is.
You're referring primarily to the west side of this area here?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a parcel that I prefer not, prefer not to speak of as much as often, or as little as possible, because there's just too much...
What he said, there's too much there.
It's the Golden Mark product parcel.
What's that?
The Golden Mark parcel.
Yeah, exactly. Don't speak of it. I mean, we all know what it is. It's got its own limitations based on what we know as a deed restriction. And putting a, putting a use on it that we know is contrary to a deed restriction, I'm not sure that makes... I don't know, I don't know if that...
Well, we have some more conversation, I mean, I have some ideas on them.
Yeah.
Want to talk about them right now?
But anybody from the public wants to, sorry, we're done. Anybody from the public want to address this particular agenda, Matt, anything? All right, you're good. Uh, now, my first choice, Stacy, you're on the board of teachers, you're good?
I'm good.
All right, we'll close the public, bring it back to council. And a motion being ordered.
We already had a motion.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, there was already a motion in the second, right?
Yeah, I don't know, we already had a motion.
Oh, done the first one?
Yeah.
Sorry. Gosh, I thought there was.
It's all drunk.
Hey, well, Lindsay, you're going to be the major very first inaugural council motion.
Oh, Lord, all right.
Have you expected lollipops and butterflies or?
Well, I just hope I can do it as well as my...
You can do it. Oh, okay, maybe you don't need to read all those things. She's going to, oh, sorry. It's staff recommendation.
Move to introduce the proposed ordinance changing the zoning map classification and set the second public hearing and action date for June twenty second, twenty twenty.
She's good to hang out, hold on a second. Hold on a second, all right. Hello, what a plan, go. All right, so, uh, any other comments?
I agree with, with Mike's concern about Baltimore and, and going, having a, a use restriction, restricted covenant on property that we are overlaying.
That which we will not speak of now. Uh, I'm not even thinking about that being a comment, that was, Lindsay had the most of it. And now we're going to take a vote. Ms. Maria?
Councilwoman Guthrie.
Aye.
Councilwoman Paul Harrison.
Aye.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wild.
Aye.
Mayor McDonald. Mayor McDonald.
Uh, wherever was I? Okay, very good.
One thing, Mary, council, I did want to bring up that following the vote from PNC to move this forward, they also voted then to make a motion unanimously approved to ask council to consider revising the boundaries of the existing Main Street Future Land Use. I didn't want to let that go, but I didn't want to muddy it with the map part. But they did have some, some of the boundaries of the Main Street. So they said that they want council to consider, they didn't say it was an urgent, they didn't say the timeframe, they just said, consider the future, maybe look at...
Maybe we'll make that more of a reservation on twenty second.
Well, I, I didn't want to muddy it with the action of that, but yeah, if that's something, if that's something that obviously could burn it up at any time.
Right. Very good.
Will we be hearing PNC's recommendations on those map changes?
They did not have any, well, they, what they did is they, they said they want to look at the Main Street specifically in the Ridgewood area. They brought a ratio, so those two areas, those, those PO properties and the area where it's right now the line, there's some single families and duplexes. So those, those are the two areas that they brought up.
Yeah, PNC has not addressed that yet.
No, this would require a comp plan amendment, take it back through the whole process.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, where are we, map movement? Okay, number three, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Maria, bless you all.
The ordinance of the city of Mainland, Florida granting Korean waste solutions and non-exclusive franchise to derive roll-up container collection disposal of waste within the city of Mainland, Florida, outlining the franchise duties provided with terms and conditions under which said franchise will cooperate, provide visibility and provide for an effective date.
All right, very good. I'm going to spare us any, uh, comments we'll have up here. Anybody from the public like to address this particular agenda item? Hearing and seeing none, comes back to council and unless there are comments, a motion would clearly be in order.
I'll make a motion to, uh, introduce an ordinance granting a non-exclusive franchise agreement to Orion Waste Solutions and set the public hearing date for June twenty second, twenty twenty.
Mike, don't you laugh when these young guys grow up right before your eyes. Second, let's go. We got a motion to the second, uh, any further comments, Ms. Maria?
Councilwoman Paul Harrison.
Aye.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wild.
Aye.
Councilwoman Nan. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mayor McDonald.
Aye.
Okay. What are we doing down short of bylaws?
Yes, so, I mean, unless you have any questions, I'm not going to give you a presentation on the bylaws. Charter view, if you have one.
Guthrie, you have the floor.
No. I'm beautiful, I'm loyal.
Bye.
So essentially, these are some basic bylaws that we showed from other boards and then added some stuff specific to commissions, um, just to give some guidelines on there about what they shouldn't, shouldn't be dreaming of. Um, setting up a process by which residents, council members, board members, staff can submit forms for consideration, how those forms would end up being considered and then how they would get transmitted to you in the end. Um, and then Cliff added some additional stuff, you know, if I had forgot, we needed to add video conferencing and teleconferencing. In case another way fits and, and he's added that. So I think they're a good start and that, that commission didn't always recommend changes to you? Yes, it's fine right now. They, if they want to choose...
Excuse me?
Right, if they want to change those bylaws, they bring them back to you and get your approval, so if something's not working. But it's very general, Roberts was the boarder, how you elect the chair, vice chair, it's just basic operating.
And we'll take applications, so Stacy Wild wants to apply, why don't you take Stacy now? But, yeah, some citizen wants to apply, just want any more application.
Well, and we would appreciate you, you know, asking people to apply, because I'm not sure in this environment, people are obviously for volunteer jobs.
It doesn't matter whether we get five applications or five hundred, we're going to point five.
Five hundred would work.
And the way we'll do that will be nomination, second, third, okay? All right, does this leave anything else here that you have?
No, that's, that's it. Like I said, if something's not working, they'll make a recommendation to change something in those bylaws, every four, that we're going to lose to that.
I don't know that we have any pressing discussion items, do we?
You got to go to the office?
Uh, yeah.
Oh, we didn't even vote on it, never mind.
See, my mind, we already voted on it, too.
There was a motion to the second and everybody didn't have control.
So in this motion, we need to discuss the five members by selection?
And we'll try not to talk about that.
Just go ahead with the general, the bylaws.
This thing is not talking about...
No, you don't.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion to adopt the bylaws, uh, for the charter review commission.
Hold on a second.
All right. And I could dare you to make a comment.
I don't like this.
So noted. Uh, Ms. Maria, if you would please call a vote.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Wild.
Aye.
Councilwoman Guthrie.
Aye.
Councilwoman Paul Harrison. Aye. Mayor McDonald.
Aye.
Stacy, you doing to make any public comment, maybe?
No, I'm good.
Very good. Okay. We're fresh out of discussion items. Any city reports?
Not for me.
I, uh, just real briefly, I, I talked to Sharon and I talked to Dave and, you know, this age of crazy worlds and everything, that we talked about what our police kind of status is and, and Dave shared with me some pretty great statistics that we have about our police department, what, and what things that we've been doing. And, uh, I don't know if you want to give any report, but I mean, I, I think...
They didn't mention double excelsior.
They do a, you know, we have a, I know these guys, we all do, they do a great job. And one of the things I think we, we do well, that I hope that we can continue to do well, and things that we can continue to improve upon, is just the community involvement that we have. But I know I see our officers at events that we have, whether it be school events or anything like that. I think having the police being present in our community like they are is a great thing. Uh, but I thought, you know, hey, let's, let's look at what we're doing and see if there's areas we can improve upon. And, um, and Dave, what do you?
You know, if I can add to that without being emotional, I mean, thirty years ago today, I was, I was sworn in here by Chief Doyle. And... And I take a lot of what I learned today when I took this job, when Sharon asked me to become police chief, wasn't because I needed a job or, you know, it was what I did. I love this place, I spent my whole life here. Uh, and I take pride in what we do in this city and how we do it. And that's what your officers do every day. We don't have a issue because they're professionals. They do their job properly, they love coming to work. It's a family atmosphere. We, since two thousand two, the Chief Doyle first House of Fair, we've been following those rules, going by those rules, professional rule of law enforcement. That's how we do our job, we've always done it that way. And I know with everything going on, there's, you know, craziness right now. Our police department, your police department's in a good place with our training, we police ourselves.
And I know that, you know, Dave was saying that the eight principles or the eight, you often, you must do that by two thousand.
Two thousand, twenty years ago.
We're talking about, they've been, they've been ahead of this and I, I certainly appreciate it, and we all do, we appreciate it.
They can't wait or something like that.
I mean, I talked to Dave about that, they've had those in place since two thousand.
But there are some very, we were talking about this today earlier, you know, that, the, the, when you start reading about the issues of Minneapolis and some of those other places, not trying to blame the union, but a lot of it goes back to very old school, you know, tells you what kind of training you can have, tells you who you can discipline, how you discipline them, goes to our attrition. And I think we've been lucky for a while, we did not have a place to do human. You know, that they feel like they work in a place where they get a due process and they don't need someone else to step in for them. But I think part of it is, even since you've come back, is a lot more community engagement than ten years ago.
Funny you say that, I was just talking to my neighbor, he's retired, Orange County. And that's what he said also was, you know, that's where you deal with the unions, they're kind of even protecting the bad cops.
Yes.
So, um, I think, you know, Mainland's in a great place, David, you do an awesome job. I'm, I'm stoked to have you here and be part of Mainland. And I've, I've never heard a bad thing about Mainland police, that one's.
I think it might be more about getting the good word out somehow through either the community policing, through, I mean, I know that you've gone to how many HRA barbecues?
Yeah, I mean, it's what we do here, is to put the good word out, I mean, it's.
Just, I think people want to hear from you too, because they're seeing different things in different cities that are not like us in terms of, you know, very old police departments, assistance to change, large departments are resistant to that change.
And our start to a hiring process, I mean, from the first interview to my interview, you know, find the right quality candidate that fits what we want here in the City of Mainland.
So I mean, I think it was nice to hear, we're not, obviously, we, we live in a very good place and I often feel like we, we take for granted a lot of things that we have here. And it was nice to hear, David, we already, we already talked about a lot of these things. You know, some of these topics that are coming up around the country have already been kind of gone through our system. And I just want you, I mean, we, I certainly appreciate everything you and your, your people do and that, I mean, they did a great job.
I think some of the things that are missing is a lot of what you deal with, also, we've got I four, seventeen ninety-two, and Mainland Boulevard in Horatio. So they, they might not necessarily be residents.
No, I'd say eight percent of our contacts are non-residents. Transits come through the city, because we are the heartbeat of everything that goes somewhere in central Florida.
Mainland Avenue is there once upon a time.
David?
Your office is your patient.
Thank you, Alan.
Thanks, David. You and I might even ask you to board the tears of what double excelsior accreditation means.
The highest of high, we've, we've got it six years straight in a row. Next one will be in two more years. And I have the perfect person for that job right now.
Yes, you know, yeah. Well, the, the interesting part is the last one, when we went to and there, I don't know if you stayed through it, but we saw somebody get their accreditation taken away.
Yes, that was Atlantic Beach.
Because of the park issue, and it was brutal.
Yes, also the Atlantic Beach.
Yeah, yeah. You want to see something heartbreaking, yes.
No, it keeps you to a proper standard of what you do along.
And I think they've been fortunate to kind of be through the last two of these. Uh, and, uh, law enforcement agencies in the state of Florida, I think we got it going on here. Okay, so we're very fortunate.
And there is some, and I, I mentioned to you earlier, and I think I mentioned to you, there is some stuff going through the, the House right now, US House, that looks like a police reform bill, I don't know if it'll make it to the Senate, but it looks like it is poised to make it through the House. And so that's a good news nationwide.
We wear many hats, sometimes too many.
Well, I'd just speak to Mayor David's debate about twenty-five minutes or so about specifically about these topics. It's very good, Dave, those process. Look, I looked at him, he did a terrific job, I can't give him enough credit. We're always agreeing. I mean, he did a terrific job of taking the time to talk with me and explain some things that I, that, you know, nuts and bolts sorts of things, regarding, you know, use of force continuums and some federal mandates will kick in in January, that we will be participating, active. It's great stuff, learned a lot. And thanks for, you know, bringing it up. You have any other reports, anybody want to babble on about anything in particular?
I just want to say real quick, I ate at the, for my first time today, I ate at the new Greek place down the road. It was fantastic, you get a lot of food, I think I touched half of it. What is that, is it something on Greek to go?
Greek to go.
Very good, very good place.
Yeah, for those of you that haven't seen, I know it's dark now, but Indian Center Square is looking different by the minute. I was up there singing hallelujah when I saw a, you know, our favorite weed, what's that called, tree? That was great, the cam tree, and it was, is no more, smells great up there. Yeah, so.
They have movement projects, I mean.
Yeah, well, and that's exactly what we hope for. I've got folks that I've tried to excite about the possibility of being able to have an event there by the end of the year, maybe. So I make them, huh?
I like your option.
Yeah, so, if we're gonna ask, the answer's always that. So, uh, anyway, anything else anybody want to address?
I just want to say thank you to Robert for all of his history lessons. They are phenomenal, I'm enjoying every single one of them.
Thank you, Sarah.
Here, here, I, I share them on our, our neighborhood Facebook page and we get big likes and comments on it.
Thank you.
Still getting still Facebook, so you don't have to tell me that.
That's all right, it'll be fine by the time you get on there.
Now, can we talk about the DMZD? All right, have we done, Michael, Michael, listen. Oh, I got it. Are we done for tonight?